Chad, Michael would want you to say hi.
Seven o'clock. Okay, call meeting in order. First thing is pledge allegiance, remain standing for a moment of silence. Thanks, everybody. Okay, first thing on the agenda tonight, we have to have our approval of the agenda?
Probably should, when we need to add Chad on there.
And I'd like to add pickle unfinished business, pickleball and school discussion, more discussion about the school building. And our, our letter to Ashley.
Do we need to put down clerk, police, fire and the letter from Eric Anderson on the agenda too?
Should be, yeah, I didn't see that wasn't on there.
So do we want to do Jeff right away since he's here and then we can move on to clerk, police, fire? With those additions, somebody make a motion to approve agenda?
Or maybe add Chad after Jeff?
Oh, yeah, I forgot Chad, yeah, Chad after Jeff, yep.
And they can go about their day.
All right, with that then, so we make a motion to approve agenda?
The move.
Someone a bit second?
I'll second it.
No favor say I?
I oppose.
Motion carried. Okay, Jeff, Bolton, Maine, Holiday Street, what news do you have for us?
Yeah, I guess I last council meetings here, we, well, a few years or a few months back, it's been now. City Council was looking at, at least I know, this council member call on, looking at what kind of aggregate depths we have. And I prepared a memo, I don't know, I believe you've got that, I'm not sure if you have, but hopefully you did, kind of summarizing what you have out there. House member called, pointed out, okay, looking at improving that roadway with paving basically, because right now it's a. It's held together quite, quite well considering the aggregate, recycled bituminous and with enough traffic, it binds together quite nicely, so. With that, we're describing what we saw when we did the borings out there, soil exploration out there. General, there was about, oh, I think seven inches to 10 inches recycled aggregate on the roadway. Here, of course, the north end of it was the thicker sections, the south end was thinner, that was the seven inch category. But I'm thinking my memo, I, you can pave that, I think that was one of the questions, look at paving it. And one of the other thoughts was, well, okay, if we do pave it. I'll take the pavement to use and then are there any other concerns in overall, like anything, what's the cost involved or something like that, so. The kind of summarizing the things that I saw. I guess I didn't get any more direction as to what the council was looking for next time around, so. I'm not sure if there was something else I was supposed to be prepared for, I guess I hadn't.
Well, I think the point was now that we had a kind of like emergency flush the hydrants one time because of a bunch of rust got in there. Well, I did it one night and that south end is only a four inch main run?
Yep.
All the way down there. The question is, being that it's very old, it's only four inches. And when you get down to the far south end, it just goes barely out of the hydrant. Would we, would we be stupid to put an overlay on our street right now without updating that water? I think that was the main thing we wanted to ask Jeff now after, I mean, I knew Ron's always said it was low water supply. But I just mean with that thing cranked open, it didn't go four feet from the hydrant.
Yeah, that's.
That's not very good.
But the houses do have good pressure.
They got adequate water, but.
You know, and then the only thing it would bother and like, we've been on party apartment forever and. The fire down there, the tankers go along automatically, they have for years, you know, so it's just a matter of, you can't run a fire truck off them. I mean, you hook to it, but you don't.
Yeah, you can't.
Run it off it, but it's just, you know, we run it just like a country fire then.
Yeah.
Or actually, I think they got enough hose now, they can come back down and depending on where it's at, they can catch.
Well, they're planning on hooking on right down the end here with the big one.
Yeah, yeah.
But again, are we throwing good money after bad by not updating that?
It's a good question, I mean, it's very, very good, very good that the city's thinking about that simply because you don't want to. Put a bitumenous surface on there, spend thousands of dollars doing that and then have a problem underlying with the water main. It could be as simple as a hydrant, you know, but chances are if it's a four inch water main, it's a long dead end like you've got here. That is, that does constrict the flow from the available at the end there. So you, you put a six inch pipe in or even an eight inch, they don't allow anything less than a six inch mains and longer, so. I can't remember what we've been using in the past, but you know, something we want to, I think I laid it out at one time before. Some recommendations as to upsizing for water main, just to get your system some more fire flow. Because right now you just don't have any fire flow according to what you're saying there, it's just.
Right, no, I've known that for years, yeah.
Well, the, the thing of it is, you know, the city could have an opportunity to buy some land out here, Jeff, whoops, some tandoop in the high line here. So, you know, say in five, 10 years or whatever, we have adequate water to hear. But if we develop some hoses along here, you know, if you come down here and did this and then went down here, you could loop it with. That street right there, you know, and you could make a loop. But I guess our, our question was, you know, right now, what kind of money would we be looking at for what, three or four city blocks? We'd have to start up here, right? Cut one down that alley.
It's about 1,300 feet. I think that's what I meant anyway.
Yeah, and then depending on what size pipe you go with, PVC is the most common, most economical, I think. Dr. Iron's catching up, it used to be vice versa, but the, I'm trying to think. You know, in Dixon, April 10 here, heard it this year, I'm trying to think whether water main costs were there, but you're probably talking maybe for a hydrant as an example, you're probably talking. Used to be only $2,500 a piece, but now they're close to $4,500, $5,000 just for hydrant, almost doubled in the last 10 years or so. And for, for like six and eight inch water main, you're probably in the neighborhood of $50, $50 a foot somewhere there.
All right. I installed, you mean, or is that just for the? Let me ask you this too, Jeff, what do you think if, if we ever did or do, do some developing out in that area? And we do run a water, a new eight inch, for example, out to the area that Robert showed there and looped it to the four. The existing four, come back, backfeed it?
Yeah. You could do that, that would help, that would definitely help. But I guess it's one of those things where if you ultimately want to improve that whole area, not only Halley Street, but that whole general vicinity, a block or two each direction. You'd want to upsize that four inch and get rid of that bottleneck.
Get rid of that at the beginning, yeah, okay. All right, see, the, what, the other part of the discussion that we had just sitting around talking about it is that. We can put an overlay on and that can be like a maintenance item and we can take care of that as maintenance. But we weren't sure that we could actually reconstruct water mains. And that would, that really wouldn't be maintenance anymore, you know, we probably have to assess.
As a city, you have the option, I mean, you don't, you don't have to assess any, anything if you don't want, that's ultimately up to the city council to determine if you want to assess.
Wondering about, I couldn't find it in our code anywhere, but it doesn't, it's not in there somewhere, you know.
Yeah, you haven't assessed the policy, but that doesn't, I mean, it's a council, you can choose when to.
I see.
Well, on that last project here, we paid for the underground, the city paid for the underground and the residents paid for the curb and gutter in the back up, you know, so.
And you have the. Modify your policy. I mean, it's one of those things that you, you start with your, you have to start with your policy and then look, take a look at it and see what kind of cost. Property owners would be assessed based on the proposed improvements that you have. If it gets to be too much, you know, from a council perspective, as well, the assessments based on our current policy. You know, maybe they're $15,000, you know, per property. You'd have to consider that, because you only allow by law to assess what has increased the amount of the improvement there, so.
Now, that's, I mean, that was the highest assessment for the last project, is that on the, on the street I live on? Yeah. Range from like nine to 14.
Yeah.
Is that four inch going down ballpark yet?
Yeah.
All four inch.
Yeah. Out into that, to the house too. Or to that house that sits in pasture out there.
Oh, okay.
To make, or there's a water hydrant out there.
So you think only $50 a foot?
Well, it depends on the diameter of the water main, I mean.
Well, I mean, you know, an eight inch should be that, which, what you would want anymore, right? Six or eight, I mean.
Well, I think we, isn't it six that we put in new with the county?
That's what I thought, it was only six out here.
Put an eight, you're not gaining nothing, you got six going either way into an eight.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I've got.
I mean, this is six going this way and there's six going that way, so either way you're getting, and then you're going to go four, which. I mean, you're not going to fill up an eight, so I don't get that, to get good pressure neither. What, what's, what's going there?
Yes, just for the pipe.
So six would probably be.
It could be a big improvement.
Yeah.
Model up to confirm a kind of additional firewall you could expect out there, but like I said, I wish I would have known that because I would have done a little more research before I came. I didn't realize it was the water main issue side of it.
About $50 you quartered, is that pipe only?
That's like pipe, and then there's fittings, something like that.
But no installation?
No, that's, that would be installation.
That's only $70,000 to run at 1,400 feet.
Well, like I said, 50 bucks might be a little on the light side, I wish I would have known.
What was the main out here? That was the same distance.
$75 a foot is 105,000 for 1,400 feet.
Well, you know, the issue that we went through, we, we've already had you do an exercise regarding the street before and the residents really didn't want to do it. You know, we're just looking for ways to get something done with the street and make it last a long time and. Maybe bring the cost down a little bit for the residents, you know, that live on the street, because we all use the street, you know.
Well, the thing is, after seeing that such low water pressure and you're going to spend what was a quote for to put blacktop down there? Yeah, I mean, it sure seems like we're not doing things quite right here. You know, you, you can see we have low volume water, houses got good pressure, but yet in a fire instance, it isn't adequate. Well, myself, I'd sure like to spend some more, well, I don't want to spend money, but I'd spend money and have a good underground before you covered it up.
That's correct. Yeah, that's, I mean, whenever you have a surface improvement like that, you always want to take a look at your underground, what kind of condition that's in, water main specifically. And you brought up a good, you know, very good point that it is in small diameter, probably old, I don't know if you've had any breaks there, but as water main caster.
No, that one has not broke. I don't think it's ever broke, has it? I can't remember one main there.
No, it hasn't.
Be careful.
But again.
You got like sanitary sewer too, you know, if you've got a clay pipe there, you can.
That all showed good when we televised it, I remember, right? If nothing else, we'd line it.
Right. You can do that.
Yeah.
Then there's that portion of the sanitary sewer from the main to the ser, you know, to the service to the home would be the only questionable spot because that. Then even once you get from the service, you know, right away to the home, there's that other segment in there, of course, that. A lot of times they're clay and clay services are susceptible to infiltration, a lot of, getting a lot more INI. There's a lot, and you've talked about that many times before, when your INI, some pumps that are connected to your drain. Putting drains are connected to your sanitary sewer service, so there's a lot. Lot that could have, there's a lot of additional things that are going. But I mean, if you can, you can line your main. Water main. Line your main without any. Each of costs, like lining costs, you know, you have that regardless, so it's not too bad.
See, we're just saying, wouldn't even have to do it right away. I mean, you could do that anytime.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, do that.
Yeah, I see what you mean.
Next year, 20 years from now.
Right.
Is there any explanation why there'd be good, you know, good pressure to the houses, but yet the fire hydrant is so bad, is it just because it's that dead end? Or could it be the fire hydrant itself?
Too small of a pipe to get that volume on the end.
Is that the reason?
And you know, time is against us.
Yeah.
On that water main.
Over time, you start to get build up inside of the pipe, I guess I haven't seen anything here recently, but over time. There is some buildup that occurs on the inside of the pipe, constricts the, constricts the diameter and constricts the flow basically.
Okay.
But if, I mean, if you're, it's kind of surprising, if you can open the hydrant on the end, there could be a couple of things going on there. One could be elevation, it could be quite a bit higher than the surrounding holes, but I don't think we got that one. But if you can, if you're just opening it, I tend to believe it's maybe something with the hydrant. Okay, even if you had a new hydrant. Especially if it's not tied. Loop anywhere, or it's not connected to your mains and side streets, you're, you wouldn't get very much flow at all. So it is, it is a fire concern.
I don't know what to do, then, you would, I mean, to investigate it all and put it all together with numbers and present it and pick it apart and, I mean, I don't know what else to do. Did you find what that, this?
No, I can go dig through the, I know we paid about 300 and some thousand.
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Like 358, I think, thousand.
And we transferred 180 out of sewer to make that solvent because of that, wasn't it? Something like that, so.
Something like that, yeah.
So it's about 100 and, it would be about 170, $75,000, you know, which. Right now, if you took 75 cents, or $75 per, for that 14 would be 105, but then is that connections to Jeff?
No, you'd have, the connections are additional, so you have to put a new corporation on to the water services. Those can run, you know, 300 bucks a piece, the water service piping.
There was one that was led that was fixed to.
There was a, the years that I think pretty much all of them have been replaced with copper.
Okay, so that's.
There might be one or two there yet, but I just.
But I mean, on something like that, when you redo this, do you put all new curb stops in then too? Because some of them may be very, very old. Do you curb stop it?
We'd recommend it because it's one of those costs, their curb stop, you know, that little box, little valve that's a curtain, little box on it, that you can be able to shut the water service off. That, I'm trying to think, that runs, that runs, you know, 3, $400. So altogether, you know, you're talking maybe, you know, a thousand bucks or so for the service that you're going to replace. And if you don't have copper all the way to the main, and depending on the age of those curb stops, the valve. A lot of times it doesn't pay to not replace them, you know, if they're, if they're, if they're more than 20 years old, I, you know, I replace them.
Yeah.
Probably way more than that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure Brian Petty's is the last newest one, that they got replaced and maybe one other one up there. Otherwise, boy, some of them I don't think have had attention for a long, long time.
Then I would recommend replacing them simply because you're there and already doing the work.
So is there any money out there that we're upgrading our infrastructure according to the Biden? Presidency, would that qualify for anything as far as how about throwing our filter over here? We have, we've talked about it for 15 years and we get zero done. So do we loop, put these two projects together and see if there's anything out there to redo our infrastructure at a federal level or not?
Yeah, we've talked, we've been talking about that a long time and there's, and I guess one of the things for the city to consider is, is that. You know, there is, there are funding opportunities available out there, and you know, everybody wants the, the free, you know, the grant dollars, I would, and I know the city, you would too. We all do. But they, it's basically, you're allowed to. Each city, you have to have your rates at certain, a certain dollar amount every month, and then if you pay it, based on those rates and any outstanding debt that you currently have. Like in the water fund, if you have outstanding debt servicing. Considering that, plus your different rates. You have to be approaching, just for example, a lot of these other communities around here, you're approaching $60 a month, it's one and a half percent of your median household income here. 2010 was about $50, I think.
Yeah.
More like 70 now. 65, 70, I think.
Wow, so then, yeah, you would have to be about. About like 12 would be about your monthly. Water rate before you eligible for any grant dollars, so if your project could be large enough. You'd have to, you'd have to up your rates, those rates, additional income that's coming in from those rates could support, you know, X amount of dollar project. But if that project's over and above that, then that's where you'd be eligible for the grant dollars, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So as a city, you can afford, if you raise your rates to the minimum, you know, to become eligible for the finance. The grant funding, if you raise your rates to that minimum, then as a city, you'd be able to afford X amount of dollars of water improvements, meaning. Your water treatment plant, your filter, your water system, your main, anything, a cost over and above that, any cost over and above that. That's why, if you do have some groups like that, bump them together.
And you were saying about $60 a month for water, is that what you were saying?
I believe so, yeah.
What would call, where? Is that what some of these communities are actually paying is $120 a month for just their water plus the sewer?
I wouldn't doubt it, I believe, but it is.
Wow.
And I know for sure, for an incentive with their pay, because I think they went through the same kind of financing, we would love it, if they all have the same requirements, I guess, so. Then they happen to bring your rates up and or to pay for what you can afford, then anything.
Yeah, I think we looked into that a while ago and it based it upon the median income, and we were nowhere near that during those years.
Yeah, we don't have enough debt and we don't charge enough.
Yeah.
Well.
Just been the way it's been.
I still don't know what else to do other than to have him do the whole, and look at the whole picture, you know?
But even then.
Peace.
Even then, you know, based on the improvements that you're looking at, the water treatment plant versus, and including Halley Street, if you wanted to do that with the water main. Even those two added together, I'm not 100% sure, since you're based on where your rates are now, if you raise those to the minimum. How much you could afford as a city, you know, you pay in the end, get a little grant eligible, but in the end, you may not be grant eligible. In the end, you have to raise your rates, I guess.
Yeah. Plus, we got a question. So, a lot. Yeah, I don't know if that makes as much difference though as. I think that's for these, some of these other little cities, it's the rates, I know that too, but I mean, it's just for other little cities, that jumps them right up in line real quick.
Look in here in the revenue side, right? They don't have much money in there, right? Don't seem like it's adding up very fast.
Have to look on that other sheet. That first sheet. Cash balance summary, yeah.
Because, you know, and then, so there'll be some maintenance that needs to be done on the water tower again also. So would you be able to put it all together, see the water fund?
I would recommend doing, I guess, depends on how much you want to raise your rates, because, you know. Based on the cost of the improvements, let's say if you, I'm just throwing some numbers out there, let's say you're only paying $30 a month right now.
That's probably pretty close.
And let's say.
Not even probably.
If you raise your rates to $50 a month, I'm just throwing hypothetically out there, based on that, that additional income would be able to support. What kind of project, you know, how big of a project, that's, you'd have to kind of work backwards.
Right.
It's hard to say without looking at the numbers, I guess.
We got 200, if I read that right, 234.
That's what I see, yeah.
And the water fund, including investments. So, you know.
By the end of the year, you'd have a half a million dollars in there, you know, or a quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah.
Easily, you got two more collections cycles yet, right?
Currently have like 42,000 outstanding payments, I suppose, 4200 or 2000?
I don't know.
Like when we transfer it over, that's outstanding.
Well, what do we want to do? I mean, we've been talking about it and looking at all this stuff, I mean, we never really asked him to.
Yeah, give us any.
Put everything together in a package and look at it all at once from, from a perspective that we can actually look at. Yeah, I mean, you got to have some numbers. Yeah, I mean, you can't just.
But will we go back to what you said, or would we come across there and make it water available for all houses on Hiller Drive? Then go down and feed it back the other way?
And, and, and that's maybe one of the considerations that the engineering department can figure out. Maybe will that be more feasible, be adequate, or will it work good enough, or again, oh?
You can, the funding, you know, if you're looking for any, for any funding, if it's grant or loan, you can get low interest loans to development. And it's my understanding though that those items like, for instance, extending water main for future development, that would not be eligible, it's just upgrades to your existing.
Existing.
I see.
You could include it, but it would be 100% city cost.
Right. But there again, though, those are all the things that you all know, that we don't, that you could look at, analyze, put the package together and make recommendations, you know, is it? If we do this, you know. But like Halliday would be a. Upgrading the system. It would be, we're just servicing what we already got, so that would be able to get into the grant deal.
Well, be eligible.
Right, I mean, that's what I mean, but the other stuff wouldn't, so you have to do the Halliday separate from the rest of it too. So we got an idea of what's taking place.
Well, you could bump Halliday with, you know, any other improvements that's a lot.
Right, but I mean, as far as the new water main, it'd be strictly that street.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you'd have to do that one separate from the other rest of it if you're going to price all of it.
Yeah, you could.
It would have to be funded separately.
Right, yeah, right.
Say, the city would be 100% responsible for the improvement cost for that.
Right. Or, you know, there again, too, if we just do Halliday, that we'd know a number there then anyway, too.
Or if, you know, there again, too, if we just do a Halliday, that we'd know a number there then anyway, too.
I, you know, just to give you a little.
Yeah.
A little more information, our our funding specialist, I mean, they they do this. Night and day, and I know they could throw something together fairly quickly, you know, based on your current median household income, your current. You need all your your audit basically from last year to the last couple of years, but if we had all that information. Um you know, because your audit has all your outstanding debt and cash reserves and that sort of thing. If we have all that, we'd be able to determine what kind of. Money you have available. And then what about how big of a project you would need in order to be grant. Eligible or funding eligible, meaning for rural development. Those sort of funding. Opportunities, they have low interest loans, RD, the advantage RD is is that it's a thirty nine year, thirty nine and a half, forty year loan. Um at a low interest rate, so the principal is very small, so you can extend it over here. For forty years. Basically decrease the amount that you owe as a city. That's less.
Well, maybe that's what we should do. Do what you just recommended there.
I agree.
Work backwards.
And give me an idea then at least what you're where you're starting from, you can still thinking about, well, maybe we should. Do this, maybe we should do that, then I can nail, then I could probably put a better number to your Halliday Street water main.
Right, right.
I'm not a hundred percent sure because numbers are. There's crazy right now.
Yeah, do you think that foresight coming into next year, things would be leveled off and not quite as high, or is there a lot of work yet?
A big smile.
It's just so unpredictable, it's really.
They had a crystal ball.
Every time you bid something, you're kind of surprised how the numbers come in because it's all based on supply, there's just not a lot of. Not a lot of materials out there, there's just not enough. Materials being manufactured, I mean, water mains one of those, um there was. Some of the pipes are in shortages, even in PBC, there's some shortage basically on water main, so it's. You know, it's it's hard to say, I guess, it all depends on the manufacturers, if they can take it back, fill it fast enough.
What is our minimum for water right now, forty five dollars?
Or what?
The minimum charge for water right now, on a minimum.
Remember what it is on hand.
The forty.
Somewhere.
You sent me a text about.
I know.
A long time ago. So all the minimums would have to go up to be, uh.
Yeah.
To sixty dollar mark, right?
The minimum is that kind of the ballpark? Based on our median income?
Like I say, depending on, you know, let's just say you raised it, you know, fifteen dollars.
Minimum for water is seven twenty five.
Seven twenty five, yeah.
Yes.
We're way low.
Seven twenty five per quarter.
Per quarter.
So that's a couple of dollars a month.
That's what I'm saying is that, you know, and we have forty five, and we did when I did this annual analyzing here, we'd have forty five customers that paid a minimum.
And their minimum would have to go up to sixty bucks a month.
A month.
Or a one eighty a quarter.
That's yes.
And they're paying what now, seven and a quarter?
Seven twenty five, seven dollars and twenty five.
So they'll be going up from twenty one, say twenty two dollars up to a hundred and eighty.
You gotta be careful, I mean, you don't have to raise it to sixty dollars per month, I mean, that's just. Just a ballpark number estimating here between you and I, council tonight. To be eligible for for the other financing that's available, either, you know, the largest loans or the grant dollars. I mean, that's just ballpark, if you were gonna, if you wanted to be eligible for that sort of thing. But if you as a city, if you don't want to use any of that financing, you want to use your own financing, your own reserves and. Maybe a bond for the improvements, you know, enterprise fund or anything, any uh improvement bond. And you can. Bond for how much you need, you know, to make the project, to make it go. And then you would ultimately only have to raise your rates enough to cover what that bond payment is and any. Deficiency in reserves that you have, so I guess what I'm getting at is you don't have to raise your rates to. Throwing sixty dollars out there. And it all depends on how big of a project you want to see. And if you want to pursue. Low interest loans or grant funding, if you don't want to pursue those, then. You you can raise your rates as much as you need to cover your improvement cost.
Because, you know, chances are of them forty five, there's probably. Two thirds of them elderly or.
Probably.
All elder.
I couldn't tell you that.
But I mean, if you took that up, say a hundred and sixty or a quarter, because say they're paying their twenty two and you did one eighty and one, so say, just say one fifty, that's a. That's six hundred dollars more a year right there. And that wouldn't be up to that level quite.
But I think it's still worth the exercise or the, I mean, I shouldn't use the word exercise, it's worth doing the work. To know where we are for sure.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, if you look, if you, when you look over the water bills, there's a lot of them that are. The water portion of it is like.
Small.
Twenty dollars for the quarter. With families living in them. You know, our water rates are super low. Have always been, you know?
Yeah, a lot of communities on here are paying that forty, fifty dollars a month.
Yeah.
Well, with Vernon Center, with the improvements they're doing over there and all that, and the water tower that they put in like five years ago or whatever it may be. Their water rate's got to be. Pretty large compared to ours, yeah.
I would expect them to be in this sort of financing in some other fashion.
I know they did get some grants for this project they're doing now, right? Real water, I believe.
Yeah, and that's partly because if you think about it, it's all based on the debt that you have, so they had some existing debt from the project previously. You add all that together and it makes you more eligible.
Sure. More in need.
More need, exactly.
So us again being prude with our money over the last quite a few years, there kind of harms us in one way. I've said that multiple times because we have money in the bank.
Yeah, and like many communities out there, that there's not a lot of communities that are in the financial situation that you are, so I mean, commend yourselves on that. When it comes to, I guess.
But we don't want to spend, you know, it isn't like we want to just dig up water main. You know, just because it could be bad. We know that this one here has got problems.
It's inadequate.
Yeah, that that that's that's a different deal, we still want to be spending money, you know, to spend money, you know, either, and that's how you end up with money. So.
Well.
I'm inclined to think that we should have him do the work that he's talking about with that funding specialist and. Work things backwards and then kind of give us some recommendations as to what. What what after looking at all their audit and all their whole picture, you know, so we know where at. And then and then kind of go from there, I mean, it's nothing going to happen this year anyway, so this is a good time to start and get going on. You know?
Ron, where's the Mojo House Fed from? So that, does he have that private line goes south?
Yeah, really, it comes across over to. West side of the street and goes down that way.
Okay, and uh.
The Leggy House and.
Would the Leggy House be there to it? Not even though we put a new one in, no, but it went out that side of the house though, right? Yeah. So that probably does go south.
That's where it came from, I mean, that's where the shot off said, I don't think they went in with a new one there.
No, I don't think so, no.
I mean, it's copper, I know that.
So would you ever?
But there again, they're happier with theirs too.
So instead of digging up that alley, you know, through there by rust raises, because that's where the water would come from. Would you hook onto that hydrant down there that we got adequate water to? And run it, and then you could service them two houses and they don't have their own private line. You're adding another, well, you'd have three hundred feet already there through that alley, so that would bring you to that corner, so then you'd have another. Hundred eighty feet to get to that new hydrant, which is very adequate. Would you do it that way? So you could pick up those two houses with private lines? Because you know somewhere along the line.
Way to do it, because we know what happens with any kind of a private thing.
That's right. Just like the one down there on the hill coming up the hill, what, two, three summers ago when that broke? That's just a single copper running off the top of the hill. So, you know, you got to think about that too, you could better serve those two people. And what you go through that alley, you could come there, so your additional hundred and sixty feet or whatever. Is that an idea? I mean, is that something we'd have to show Jeff on paper? You know, what is more fundamental, going from here to here or from here to here and then back feeding them or just leave them tied on where they're at? I mean, what do you think about private lines that run three hundred feet, Jeff?
From water?
Yeah.
Yeah, those, I mean, you're talking about that with a lot of information and knowing you're talking there is, but. You're not allowed to serve more than one property from water service, for instance. Uh you need a main to do that, so uh if you've got two homes, you would need a main, minimum six inch diameter main to serve those properties, you can't. You can't um. Go from one service, you know, one inch water service, even an inch and a half water service. And then jump to the next property, go one inch from that property to the next, you you're not allowed by code to serve. More than one home with a water service. So it's kind of unfortunate.
So I mean, because you could loop that four inch in there, still leave it in that alleyway serving them houses, but then you could also pick up and better the service for two other people. So yes, we'd almost have to draw it out on paper, Jeff, what we. The two options on this end, you know? Because you would be starting right up this street here, one block up and then going that way. Or you could take and run it right straight down to there and hook up to that hydrant room, put in there. Five eight, five years ago, whatever, and that's got at least a six inch main running down to PBC.
Yeah, yeah, there's, I mean, initially, I think the thought would be is to kind of see. Where you're at financially, uh what you could afford as a city, you know, based on what rates you would have, if you had, you know, if you raise your rates X amount of dollars per month. Here's what you could afford. And then we can take a look at, okay, uh what's going to be the best way to to get that improvement made, is it simply looking at that cost? What's the benefits of that? Upsizing something a little bit more. But it's fairly simple to do, that is cost, that's that's fairly simple. And looking at a map. Based on the diameter pipes you have. Now, like I said, I already laid all that out once before, I mean.
Yeah, when we looked at this project before, you know?
Yeah, and I thought I'd laid out, like I I have a back of the office, I laid out when I did the water modeling for the whole city. I came up with some recommendations for main sizes, that stuff. If you ever do replace a main, here's what you want to consider going diameter wise.
So you've actually got some of that work already done, that's that's okay, yeah.
I already did all that. That's that's been a hundred years ago, but I.
It has been.
But it gives you an idea where to start from, you know.
Three or five.
Well, I think, yeah, we're going to do. Yeah, I think we need, you know, nothing's going to happen this year, we can take, you know, work on it all, fall and winter. See what kind of costs would be, you know, think about raising our minimums up a little bit, you know?
Right. Well, I'll make a motion that we have. Have, I can't think of the company Bolton, I think, I think it's Jeff.
With that motion, do we give Jeff the go ahead to throw the filtration plan in on?
Yeah, that should be part of Vic's consideration for this whole entire project, yeah.
Because, you know, we can, you can do it right by aerating it with pipe, right? On our sand filter that we have now, but I mean, just throw it all in one lump sum.
Yeah, we put some cost estimates together for replacing that filter with the pressure filter and then also rehabbing the existing filter that was back about four years ago. But I mean, some of that that information is readily available and and it's easy to. To determine ultimately what kind of impact would have on rates by by um putting those costs in there.
All right, Tom made the motion, someone second.
Second.
Well, in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, motion carried. All right. I guess you got some instruction there now, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, nice to see everybody again, and I'll be in contact.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Anything we also have to ask Jeff here, well?
Well, I was just thinking, you know. What's what's coming down the pipe, you know, we we've uh. We got a really good sewer and water operator, you know, Brian Severn is just fantastic, and he's always keeping us sort of up front and. You know, and what do we, what's coming down the line, you know, with the uh. Limits, the new limits, but I can't think what the limit is right off the top of my head now again. The phosphorus limit and um. Where they're going to start actually finding and, you know, really doing, really, really getting after. So we may have to be thinking about something. We know that we have a contributor of phosphorus in town that we may have to do something with, you know. One one way or another.
I think that's what we were talking about a couple of months ago, we wanted to meet with Jeff there about expanding our. Lagoon. And it doesn't show it on there anywhere. We need to hold our water longer, you know, Jeff, you know all about that, but to to get that phosphorus limit down there longer. You know, and the land that's next to it is very hard to acquire. If you'd ever take a peak out there in the front and you'd move the driveway to the west edge and enter that. Could we ever expand our secondary pond farther south towards the road and how far off the center? Line of the road does a lagoon have to be? Do you know that or?
Yeah, because I remember we talked about that once before too, and I remember I researched that. And I'd have to look back and see what that is possible, because I remember we talked, looked at that one.
If you kind of go by that, we're behind you there, Jeff, now if you go by that road that goes down to the burn pile. And you eliminated all them trees and you could gain about four acres in there. Because of four acres in there, would that be enough additional to? Be good adequate for good thunder for the next fifty years or not? Nobody knows that.
I was I was just, I was researching um minutes or. From our, it was in November thirteenth city council meeting, this minutes. Because I know we spoke about that, Johnny Grubman from our office came and talked about that exact same thing and um. This was November thirteenth of two thousand eighteen, but I'm trying to think here. Putting them off because I.
I mean, is uh is four acres enough to to build a dike and line it or is that just a drop in the bucket? Do we need to talk about going to the west and make it a lot more and have three ponds or, I mean, that's, I think.
I'm sorry, but we we talked about, um you got your phosphorus limits there, you know, whenever you. Add a new basin or upsize your existing pond system, you know, would be, I think. Required to meet the new limits and phosphorus limits, and I'm not a hundred percent sure what those are at this time, that's something that Grubman will know, but um. I know we talked about at that time. You could chemically treat the phosphorus, uh you know, in the ponds, and we estimated, I think, in two thousand eighteen, it would be about, you know, twenty thousand dollars a year to do that. That was an option because if you go that route, really, INI is the thing that is. Causing your ponds to physically be overloaded. What years, and you probably having any problems now, like to get or have you?
And we, on what I, I'm sure over the weekend, we probably gained two hundred and two hundred and twenty five, thirty, forty thousand gallons. A day during the rain event, but as soon as it's done raining, it goes right away, it goes just like this and goes just like this. So somewhere we still got a leak.
That was the other thing we wanted to talk to you about too, is maybe developing an INI investigation program or something. We've done some, we've done camp, we've done some work and we're just not finding it, you know, we're just not seeing it.
Like rural, I think rural development or something did, didn't they smoke a lot in the sewer?
Yeah.
It's been quite a while ago and I mean. Each winter a pipe could get distorted, you know, and uh we we haven't found it yet, we've lined a lot of stuff, we spent a lot of money on lining. But still, we have. The contributor, I mean, it slowed down when we did that across the field down there. Two summers ago. Two summers ago, two falls ago, or be it two falls. That slowed it down a lot, but we still have a big contributor during the rain event. I mean, we we can't have that many basements running into it.
Can't be. I don't think anyway. I mean, I don't, I don't know.
And I mean, they were all smoked already years ago, twenty years ago, right? Thirty years, twenty years ago when we did the lagoon, we smoked everything in town. So we still have. On a rain event, a lot of I N I.
Couple hundred thousand gallons here in this last.
I bet you there, what, Saturday? And Sunday, we got four point two inches in that two days. We probably got at least a half a million gallons of extra water.
Because compared to previous rainfalls at around an inch or two, it was about a hundred and fifty more thousand gallons. So we can base it upon that.
But we also know that down behind Sarah's house there, that was never lined yet. And that could be in a lower area there that, you know, we should do some investigating. I mean.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering about that one down there because I remember we were doing that project and. Was and they connected to that sanitary sewer there. But, you know, never did any research or anything or never did any investigation and he froze down.
So I guess, as Tom was saying, we need to know. Or you need to find out, according to Brian Severns, our water guy, that's gonna, they're gonna get tougher on the phosphorus. So we need to know what's the most economical way to go with our lagoons, to expand them, to treat them. To have, to spend some more money on I lining I N I or, I mean, telescoping them. I mean, we we can't give up.
No, no, we have to keep going. That's the thing, but we we kind of come to the point where. The next thing we do is almost gonna be a stab in the dark.
Well, you know, we haven't looked into it. Don't be hurt her place. I don't know if they've been in there or not.
I almost think back when it was smoked, there was smoke came out of the ground.
I was working for the city at that.
Yeah, there was smoke coming out there and we never have lined that. And that services how many of you people? Three or four of you?
They worked for the city.
You and the next.
Yeah, it's just a few of us that go back there.
But again.
A lot of water, I mean, a lot of water comes down and fills that ditch.
There you go.
And if there's, if there's something going on down there, it's gonna infiltrate that. And I still can't help but think that there's gotta be a field somewhere that somehow. I just can't, as much as the volume that we get, it's hard to believe that we don't get runoff from somewhere. But yeah, if you look back there on a big rain event, it's it's fault, that whole.
We need to just dig down there and have them guys.
Yeah, there's a manhole right there.
Handle right behind winters.
Yeah.
Because when we, when we redid our sewer, it went straight back. And there's a manhole that's kind of raised up quite a bit behind winters. So.
So we just, as a council, we need to just go pursue that, get it done. That's, there's no other way to do it. Just do it.
But if there's other ways that we can investigate this.
Yeah, is there, are there new and better easier ways, you know?
No, I mean, I was glad to hear that you were doing the smoke testing and that, I mean.
I mean, it's all seventy years old.
I mean, the only thing we would be able to do is do additional smoke testing and additional investigations. In the volume water that you're talking about is is more like a direct connection. If you're seeing it almost right away at the waste. Plant, it's not one of these where. A lot of times your sub pumps, if your sub pumps are connected to your your sewer service. A lot of times that takes a little bit to get infiltrate and then pump out and then ultimately get down to pond system. You'll see it down there, but a lot of times if you've got a roof or something that's draining or a catch basin in the roadway that's draining. Or a ditch that's draining water in there and it's taking water in one of the manholes, you'll see that right away. So I mean, based on the timing, I know we've looked at it and based on, you know, we've actually flowed them. We put them, we've put um flow meters in the manhole.
Yeah, I think we've done that already. I think we have, we've done it by by the bank to north, north of the bank. We did one there. And we did it where we know where the accumul well, like this one here comes all the way down by Sarah's. We, I think we've done them three play, three locations twenty some years ago.
Oh, well, maybe we need to do it again.
You know, yeah.
Yeah.
If you get those cameras in there, then you can, if you get a rain event, and that's when it'll tell everything, but if you get those flow meters in there. You put them in this, you'd set your, divide your system out so that you can put them in the main locations of your system. And then based on the floors, you can estimate how much floor should be coming from that system based on normal days. And then you can determine based on how much after a rain event, how much floor that you're getting. You can compare the two and see where, you know, how much additional floors be generated in each one of those districts. Then you can narrow down that district. For instance, if you find the district of southeast corner town, oh god, we've got. Seventy percent of our additional floor is generated from that district. Well, then you concentrate on that area. In that area sense.
Right, right. Years ago, I know we pulled manholes in a rain event and you could see we're elevated from the normal line. It was higher, you know? You don't have that much time to do all that anymore. And flow meters would be a lot better option.
Well, it'd be more accurate. It'd be in real, real time.
It'll give you some hard answers as the word.
At least a quadrant of town, you know?
Pursue it after that.
Do you have any idea what that costs? I mean, just shoot from the hip. I mean, is it, is it a thousand? Is it five thousand? Is it twenty five thousand, you know?
Well, I mean, to do, depending on how many flow meters you've got installed, I mean, it's gonna take somebody probably. Well, just say five, let's just say five meters. It's gonna take somebody a good part of a day to do that.
Yeah.
Then to monitor them. And then if you, in the end, if you want to determine. What kind of rates you should be getting, which is easy to do, I think, based on what the flow meters are telling you. You have to download that information. I'm gonna do a little bit of analysis, but you're probably talking. You know, depending on the number of meters, maybe five, ten thousand, maybe.
Our luck, we do it in a ruin rain for thirty days.
Well, I don't know. We've been kicking this around an awful long time.
Yep.
And it's kind of coming down to the wire now, you know, with the.
But I think the more we show that we're trying to find it, it's gonna, it's gonna vote better, you know?
Well, I think he said he has to have a letter or something there. We have a year to have a plan in progress. Whether it's to expand our our lagoons or if it's to treat our lagoons for the phosphorus. I think we have to have a plan in place in not even twelve months anymore.
Soon you got a letter then from M P C A or?
It was part of this new permit.
Well, you did get the draft of the permit then?
Yeah, we're we're still in the blanket permit, you know, whatever, but we have only one year in that. If we, if we remember the time, right, it's just one year, then we'll we'll have our own permit. You know, if we don't meet all the.
Sure.
Parameters.
Yeah, is that something you could say?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be something that you you need to see.
I'm curious, when they, when they do the smoking, it was either when it was wet, it was better, or when it was dry, it's better. When you smoke the, what is it?
You gotta have a dry.
Is it dry?
Ground is dried.
So not anytime soon.
And I think I know of one house that has these spots going in the ground. I don't know where they go from that point.
Oh geez.
So, you know, on a, on a rain event like the last couple of days, that's a lot of water off of.
It's a lot of, lot of, lot of water.
You found that letter? Yeah, okay.
Well, do we want to give him some authority to?
Yeah.
Get these flow meters installed and as he's describing and kind of do an analysis. We gotta do something. We gotta, we gotta. At least then we can maybe narrow it down a little.
Is it somebody local that does that, Jeff, you know, in Mankato, or do you have to reach out to the cities or?
There would be somebody here in Mankato that would do it. Trying to think, we used to have a number of flow meters. I can't, I can't remember how many we have as a company, but.
Oh, you have your own. Oh.
So.
Probably have to rent those.
Depending on how many we want to install, we might have to rent.
Well, we know that we we lined that whole thing down there on. East edge, right? We lined that whole thing for how many, well, hell, it has to be half a mile, right? Or better?
Yeah.
We went a long ways down there, so we know we should be out of the woods there along that hole. Oh, were you coming on County Road One straight ahead? We lined that for a long, long ways. Because we, there were still two manholes or one manhole. We never exposed yet, right? That was when Becca was here and we were lining that. I never did find a, the one manhole there, so. Yep, right on the east edge there, along that field. Yep. And we lined it all the way to that manhole and sixty six, right? Because the county wanted us to put it in new, but we chose to line it because it was so.
I think the engineer said we ought to do it too, but.
Yeah, I was, I I recommended to get new.
And I said, no, there's a new way of doing it.
Pipe is really flat, the joints were just jointed.
Yeah.
Offset. So I mean, if you have a lot of flow in there, it's best to get it uniform. Not risk having a plot, I guess, because of this.
Would we, would we video some of them that we have lined like that one there, for instance, where we know we had a couple sag? Would you, would a guy video them to see if there's been any movement in the last couple of years? Or see if they're in good shape?
They say that liner you put in there is just indestructible. I mean.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
If you had a piece of it up here, you can drive a car over it. It won't break. They seem to do it done. I mean, it's, it's tough.
Why don't we give him the opportunity to do this and then we'll maybe be able to make some of those decisions?
That's right.
Yep.
Who in your department would do, somebody in your in-house would come out, do the meters for us then? Okay.
People that install, I mean, I used to do it when I was. Intern, twenty five, thirty years ago.
So do you leave them in there until you have a measurable rain event? Because otherwise you're not gonna be able to find out nothing.
Yeah, you'd want to do that. You're gonna want to get a baseline flow, your floors without any rain, and then you're gonna want to have a. Couple of rain events.
Ryan's got all that. He's got. All kinds of readings. I mean, it's daily.
For that, yeah.
Yeah, for the pond, yeah.
We'd want to get them here throughout the city.
No, I know, but I mean, he he knows exactly how much is pumped, how much is coming in after the rain and. So I mean, he's got great paperwork.
I'll make a motion then that we authorize Bolton make to do that, you know, I N I investigation. As he's described with the flow meters.
With that, would we also authorize if they found a volume of water to have them televise it right away? So we don't have to come back and go, yep, we found it, televise it right away and find out where the leak is?
I want to call whatever the company that we.
Do you televise or not?
You know.
No, no, what are you gonna do from, from, if you, well, if you're just doing the flow monitoring, that will get you. Kind of tell you which areas is. It's not gonna take care of locating every I N I issue that you have. I mean, that's what you're smoke testing and televising.
Right.
Would potentially do.
I guess what the question was, if if you found a problem area, would we have given our company permission to hire somebody and just get it done?
I don't see why we wouldn't.
Well, yeah, because, okay, let's wait until next month and fire, hire somebody. Just let you go ahead. If you found a problem area, get somebody in there, televise it, then make the next step and line it.
And then we would know.
Yeah, I think you want to consider smoke tech, smoke testing that area. Because then that's gonna give you the way the smoking gun is.
Nice.
Because then it'll tell you where the problem area is, but you said you've already done that, so. To me, there's probably some more thorough investigation that's required there. I mean, if you find an area that you are. Excessive flows, contributing a lot of extra I N I, that's the region you're gonna want to concentrate on. And then if that's, based on that, you can do your, your smoke testing and narrow it down as to where is that? Tevising is not gonna tell you where the problem is. It will show you every service out there. But you don't know where that service goes. It could be a house or it could be an abandoned service. If you can't see more than a few feet up it. You just don't know where a smoking it would tell you where, if it's a live service and where it goes. That's what I would suggest.
That would be my motion. That would be my motion, this, all of it, yeah.
All of it above.
His recommendation.
Tom made a motion, someone a second.
I'll sign it.
On favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. All right, I think you got quite a basket full there, Jeff.
Thank you. Trying to get things going there.
I sent you over the water treatment permit already too, so that'll be wait for you and. In touch with me and we'll go forward.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Chad.
I'm just here, you got the insurance renewal. Not a lot of.
Thanks, Jeff.
The biggest change is about seven hundred thousand dollars of coverage based on, you know, mostly inflation. Type stuff and that's the difference in premium, which is up about three thousand six hundred hours from last year. The other thing that is included now that they hadn't included before is called cyber insurance. And that is. Stuff like that. So we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of coverage that the league threw on all policies. Which also contributed to a little bit of an increase in premium. We did have a two thousand twenty two dividend check of seventy four, seventy six, which is returned to the city. Based on loss experience of this, of the league. The contribution of the city. So I don't, the only, the only thing, like I said, that's really changed in the policy itself is that cyber coverage. And and, you know, when you had seven hundred thousand dollars of coverage, your premium is gonna go up. I would expect that to be maybe even higher next year with inflation. I mean, I personally don't think building costs will ever go down, but people think they're gonna go down, but I, I can't. Nobody can tell me one reason why they would.
I, I probably ask this question every year, for a couple of questions. First of all, do we have replacement insurance? Like, let's say the firemen go out and they smash up a fire truck, total it out. Is that replaced with a brand new truck?
I don't know the answer to that question, other than the fact that there is some that do and some that don't qualify. Look into the policy and what. And.
Imagine based on age or.
Age and then, you know, some of them are insured to a value based on what was put into them, like, you know, if it's a Ford. F four fifty, it's not a typical F four fifty. You know, you added a tanker, you added this, you added that, so that's in, that's involved in the coverage.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well.
When you say like.
Let's, let's.
Answering the question about replacement cost is somebody. Going with the tanker and rolling around the curve. And all of a sudden to get one that day, it's not two hundred grand, it's eight hundred grand. Well, that's a big difference, you know what I mean? So when you say replacement cost is always to the limit of cover. So I'd have to look at the auto portion of the policy to tell you exactly which ones. Because I know we had some that were qualifiers for replacement cost coverage with a limit. Of coverage, probably on what we paid for them.
Okay.
You know?
Can you just email Ashley that answer, if you would? That way they're.
Do a breakdown of vehicles.
I can, we can answer that question.
Mostly the uh fire trucks.
And then the other question is um volunteer insurance. If. Marine on just steps up and helps somebody here in the city. As a volunteer. Are they? Are volunteers covered?
Mm-hmm.
They are.
What does that fall under?
Work comp. Volunteer work comp.
So, yeah, but a volunteer does not supposed to get paid, so there is no workman's comp comes out of that.
That's they rate it totally different, it's the league is the only one that does it. There's you can't get it on the private market.
Really, so if a volunteer.
It's a it the volunteers that they know of are based upon the fireman.
Are you talking firemen or are you talking?
We're just talking any citizen that volunteers that pull weeds.
Oh.
You know.
Firemen are covered under work.
Yeah, they're covered, yeah.
They wouldn't be covered then.
Okay. So like if there's a storm, you know, and and we see that there's branches everywhere and I go pick them, cause I've done that before. We go pick them up and, you know, we get hurt somehow.
We had volunteer insurance over the years.
I thought we did.
We did, we did, we had volunteer insurance. It's like Sarah said, if there was a catastrophe and people came out and they tripped and fell down.
Wrong on that, I I I don't.
I think you should look that and see.
Get up to it.
If not, get it.
If it's available, yeah, if it's available, because.
If it's available, it's on here. I just don't know how the form reads now.
Okay.
The volunteer, cause it have to fall under work comp, because how are you gonna, how are you gonna? It's one thing to pay their medical bills. Okay, but what if they're out of work for a week?
Right.
Yeah.
And then.
Right, yeah.
That one, that person doesn't work, a quick trip, he works at Piper Jaffray in Minneapolis.
Right, yeah. Yeah. I figure it out, I mean, gives.
But workman's comp, you have to be off of work for, is it five days before you receive it or how does that work? I can't remember, right away?
Yeah.
Well.
Wage loss right away.
Okay.
No. I think I think we need to know that too. You know, because when you read, there's an awful lot of cities that do volunteer projects. I mean, as they start off. The the whole project idea is to have volunteers come and do that and they sign them up and, you know, it'd be nice to know.
It's like helping your neighbor.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Right, it's it, that's what it is, yeah.
Like if you went to your neighbors, would you expect them to pay for you if you got injured?
Yeah, well, some do.
How about a a city event like a celebration and it's volunteers that put it on and they were down on Main Street one day doing it? And they they fall off the curb while they're being a volunteer for a city function? How how does that all work?
We need to know that. Yeah, figure that out or see what the policy says. And let Ashley know that one too. I do think, I agree with you, I'm pretty sure we've totally had.
We've had it, I know we've had it.
That type of volunteer insurance.
Over the years, it may have been fifteen, twenty years ago, but there was an line item that said volunteer or something, I'm pretty sure.
There's always been one on the work comp that says volunteer.
But it's the fires.
There's a rate.
But that's the.
That's the, they base that off of the fire department, on your firefighters.
Right, okay, just.
But I don't know if they've changed the form, if you're saying you used to have it.
Well, we think we used to have it.
Yeah.
How about if the five of us council people?
Yes.
Volunteer for something.
Yep.
And somebody gets hurt. We're covered under workman's comp because we are paid. Because we get a salary once a year.
Yeah, it's stipend, yeah.
Yes, you'd be uncovered under the work comp.
Hmm, but is there work comp taken out of ours?
No.
No.
What are they taking out of?
Taken out of our check at the end of the year for our.
Nobody else's.
Pardon?
Nobody else gets that taken out.
You don't take, you don't take work comp out of anybody's check.
No, but I mean, is it figured off of our value? You know, it's so much per hundred work comp, right? So if I got fifteen hundred dollars worth of uh salary, is it figured off of that then? How 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 does that premium pay?
I think we need to know, or at least find, you know.
Find because.
Find all this out.
Work comp.
Where we're going.
Work comp is based on salary, right? Wages. It's ten percent or whatever the duty of the job is, it's got different ratings, so.
I think they rated, I think they rate the work comp for the uh city council and the mayor, just like they do with the volunteer firefighters. Based on number of people. And then they blanket a rate for it's expensive. Because you could have one injury that, you know, somebody has a big time job at. And that's that had been changed here within the last five years and how they rated it.
I know that.
I just don't know if it, if it would cover, I think the biggest issue that you want to know is that, does it cover people like uh myself? That if the city needs to clean trees off the road, that I'm gonna come and pull one off the road. Is that considered a situation where it's volunteer work comp?
Right.
I would argue that it doesn't, but if you want to have that coverage. You know?
Well, I guess.
Cause I mean, you shouldn't be. Our volunteers should just have. You know, sometimes you gotta recruit them to help do things.
Yeah, yeah.
Most of them do it at their own free will.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. And I guess.
It's different for a council member and fireman.
Okay, I I guess I'm thinking a little bit forward here, you know? We have to discuss the school issue here in town. And and we already know pretty much that we can't afford to own it and develop it ourselves. But maybe we could buy it, sell it to somebody who could develop it, maybe. This is thoughts. But in order to make some of those areas work, you'd have to have volunteer help.
Mm-hmm.
Otherwise, I don't think any of it'll work, you know? I mean, you almost have to have volun- some volunteer help.
As an example, the city buys the school. And you get a contractor to go in there and do some work as a volunteer.
No, I I'm saying that. To run. We we, let's say we buy the school and we sell it to a developer, that person then owns it. And then we lease back the gym, for example. And every Friday night or Thursday night, whatever, we have open gym. And we recruit volunteers to go down and police that. Those people are our volunteers, are they covered? That's the kind of thing it's gonna take to make that kind of an example work, you know?
Okay. I'm gonna find that out.
Or or even just even further than that, you know? They're working in the kitchen and they're slicing, you know, cut a finger off, you know? I mean, it can happen and those are likely to be volunteers.
Yep.
Right?
Yep, absolutely.
Even if they're stipend, I mean, they're still a volunteer, you know? So.
Yeah, I think we need to know that because. You wouldn't get volunteers, or I mean, it's hard to get anybody to volunteer now.
Yeah.
But, you know, if they know, if they got hurt, they're not covered, it'd make it worse, yeah.
Right.
If they know they can, you know, like you say, cut a finger and it takes five stitches.
Yeah.
They know that. It makes your job a little easier to volunteer. Is that the point?
That's the point.
Yep.
That's the point.
All right.
Makes sense. I will find out.
Otherwise, that was real easy, Chad.
Was there any claims from the city over the past year?
Um. There was. One. It was uh last year closed on nine uh September one of last year was closed.
All right.
Liability claim.
All right.
All right, as in, as far as in like the fire department or?
No, uh, against the contractor that the city hired.
Wouldn't we, would we have the right to know that or?
Yeah, you would, I would be able to give her the information and then I don't think it should be.
Yeah, do that.
Setting.
I guess, you know, if we're paying the premium and some something happened.
There was no payout and the claim was closed.
Yeah, there's no payout, the claim was closed, you guys knew about it.
Well, we don't know if we're talking about the same one or not.
I'm can guarantee we're talking about the same one, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But if you want to get it to me when we have enough closed meeting or something, I can get it to them or they can pop in and read it over.
Yeah.
All right. As far as workman's comp, there was nothing for the past twelve months or anything?
Nope.
Okay. Because a fireman could get hurt, slip, fall.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, they're really good though.
All right.
Um, the only thing that you have to do at this, uh, we do have one. Open from a long time ago.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure some, some of you might know that.
Fifteen, twenty years ago, probably.
That's longer than that.
Really?
It's probably uh.
That's ongoing for life?
Work comp never ends. You don't want it to. Here's enough. I'd say it's twenty-five to thirty years old.
Really, yeah. Kansas are was on a former fireman.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
He was a fireman.
Yep.
The only thing that you guys have to do at this meeting is you have to uh waive the tort limit if you want to keep your umbrella policy in force, which we have to do every year.
Yep.
Um, in order to do that.
So move.
Second it.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried.
Is that I just need Robert to sign this?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, yep.
That it done, Chad?
Yeah, that's all I got, unless you guys have.
Anybody else? Question for Chad? If not, okay, move on, thank you. Uh, did we get a police report?
Did not, but I do have um calls from July for the fire department. They had nine calls. Seven were medical and two were fire alarms.
All right.
And the blood, they had a blood drive, it went well.
Um, do we need to approve? A new fireman?
Yep, so that's white and red, um, you guys can read it, they want us to approve the council to approve the new one and then to um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Phil would like acknowledgement of Larry Ron and his twenty years, so, yeah.
Let me make a motion then to approve Brady Hewitt. He was approved by the hiring committee and approved on seven nineteen. Let me make that motion. And would you in the same motion accept Larry's retirement or don't we have to do that?
Separate, yeah. A motion to approve the hire of Brady Hewitt.
Someone second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carried.
What did you then will?
I think we should do separate.
Separate.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they just, um, Phil wants to make sure that the the messenger knows that Larry had twenty years of faithful service for the Thunderfire Department, so.
All right, so maybe I'll make a motion to uh accept Larry Ron's retirement after twenty years of faithful service?
I'll accept it, I'll make the motion to accept it, but I'm not happy with it.
All right, somebody second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Larry Ron.
Yes.
Um, did you have anything then? Ashley under your clerk?
Uh, the only thing I had, we were discussing the um media for the meeting, the public hearing. Um, just doing audio that um auto media would be a thousand dollars to have everybody mic'd up. No streaming, no video, just audio, so and the speakers and a tech guy there to kind of run it all for that meeting, so.
And that's what the person there.
Yep.
So the the first quote I got was without a person. That was us, he wanted two people to come and pick it up and he was gonna teach us.
Yes.
So.
So this one is with a person there, um. Council members would be mic'd and there'd be a podium with a mic for residents to address the council at the public hearing at the school and speakers, so it can all be heard.
What's the name of the place?
Uh, Auto Media? It's the estimate I gave you guys last month.
Yeah.
But they had streaming and the video on there and I said we wouldn't need that, so just the, just audio, so.
I think it's important that people can hear.
I do too.
Yeah, I'm assuming the people are gonna come, but you know, that's the chance we take.
How much was it?
A thousand dollars.
Thousand bucks.
And that includes a person.
I am.
To do it.
Okay, and that's next Monday night, right?
Correct.
Heard, no, two weeks.
No.
No.
No, next Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, fifteenth, yeah.
It's this Monday already.
And then Sarah was talking to the school about having it opened early, so that people could come and kind of walk around the school beforehand, kind of see the status of everything.
And they said um that they'll awful, they'll also have chairs and then some tables up front for us. And chairs for the audience and they just said that, you know, just be mindful that, and they apologize, but they'll probably have pallets of stuff that need to get moved yet. But that you can, they can go and look in all the rooms.
Well, we understand.
Yeah.
What's going on, you know?
Just a mess.
Now, do we have individual speakers as far as the council?
Like microphones, yep.
Okay.
Somebody wanna make a motion then to a thousand dollars to. Out of whatever it is.
Media.
So move.
Someone second?
I'll second it.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Probably take that out of advertising or from.
Yeah.
It's kind of handy to have this checks for the month here that was wrote out.
Yep.
But the only thing.
Nice.
Only thing is, these are checks that we received, right?
So the green, let me see.
Is the red.
So after.
Yeah, but they got negatives in front of them.
Right, right.
Burger, cause they were here last week, um, they said most cities are getting this. Um, I've never seen this performed in my life, so the green ones are deposits.
Yep.
The um other ones are checks that went out. And then the other ones with an E on them are like our electronic checks, so anything. Um, banking charges were going on there, Excel is all paid electronically, so it's not a physical check going out. Our pair is electronically, our taxes are electronic, so it kind of shows you a breakdown of what it all is. So these were all for July.
Well, this green shouldn't be in the negative, they should be their deposit, their revenues, their creative.
Well, they are.
Because you take.
Looking, it goes up.
Yeah, it goes up, but why is there a negative there?
That's just how that accounting system does it.
Don't question the system.
These should be the negatives, these are what the checks are wrote for and it takes away from.
Yeah, just just ignore it the way they do that.
Well, I wouldn't be wanting to be an accountant, because I figured negatives are.
Negative, on that, on that second page.
Yep.
The ball field.
Yeah. Yeah. Why are they all ball field?
And the cost.
So they're not all ball fields. When, when I pulled Excel, they have each account is populated in there. So ball field is just the first one. So it'll say, Excel will say ball field concession or concession or ball field. Well, whatever, it lists all the, the ads on there. And but if you pull the full audit report, you would see that this just shows the first line item on it.
So it was eighty-eight, seventy-six is all you paid for the ball?
Yep, yep.
The seven ninety-two was probably the.
The street lights.
Yeah.
The street lighting, yep. So it's, it's, it's not a perfect, he just wants you to see basically the electronic checks and stuff.
It used to have a lagoon too, big lagoon. It'd either be the seven ninety-two or the seven eighty-five, right?
Yes.
One of them too.
Yeah. And our lagoons are, um, part of the solar program. So sometimes we have a credit on that one. Sometimes we don't. It just depends on the solar program. But you're here. They went all over everything. So.
And then, uh, on one of these here, um, on that revolving fund, now I won't be able to find it. There's twenty-five thousand, twenty-three thousand and some. Has there been any checks now wrote out of that?
From, from, oh, no, no, there's nothing forward. Um, the two that could resubmit of the two, one resubmitted, the other one has not yet. So, um, and then we're working with M B A C and the cog to decide a process so they can be pre-approved. They'll pre-approve them. Graham, do you say I would approve these? You guys approve them? The checks come from us.
Perfect.
So we're trying to work out a better.
That's the amount that I found. Shouldn't that be in here under general government, under our, uh, small city revolving fund? Shouldn't these number, this revenue be in there somewhere?
I don't know. It's in there. That cash.
Cash balance summary.
I'm not a auditor.
Me neither. It's, but it's in.
Cause it's on one of these other ones with that amount on it.
Yeah.
But I thought, you know, that that should be showing up over here.
Maybe the, yeah.
And we just, we just leave this debt service here for, uh, general, even though there's no debt service, you just leave that as a line item?
I guess. We asked that question.
You don't take and get rid of it until you have another debt?
We've asked that question of Greg.
Okay.
Before, and it keeps coming back exactly the same way.
And speaking of small city revolving too, that, that loan that the city has out there for that business has not made a payment. So two years, twenty-four months.
Two years ago and now in August. Yeah. So again, that raises another, what, what do you do?
Yeah.
Well, like the county said, they're, they said usually the doors are closed on a business when they're not making payments. So they just.
Well.
Attorney said it's going to cost more to try to go after it than what you're going to lose. You need?
Yep.
Yeah.
What are you going to gain by rationing it?
Yeah. So in other words, the citizens of town will pay off that debt, be allowed to keep the doors open and the county will do the same thing probably, right?
If the county foreproses. Same thing happened with the car wash twenty-five years ago.
Yep. Yep. Yep, absolutely.
Car wash. Well, it ain't open, I guess. So we don't.
Then, uh, under, uh, expenditures there, banking charges. Um, year to date is eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
So we get charged for P S N, our online service, uh, monthly is sixty dollars a month. I think it just went up to, and then.
So much per checker.
Yeah. So well, and then so for on our check reader, we pay so much per check.
Okay.
So when people are paying checks, when we run them, we get charged for that.
Oh.
So then, then under contractual services on the same page, we're up to fifty-six hundred, but is that for like the cog and, uh?
So it would be the cog, it would be our online, uh, city code that's on there. Um.
Who do we pay that to?
American Legal Publishing, I think is what they're called. Um, and they're the ones that update the code and everything for us.
Is that a monthly fee to them people then?
Annually.
Right. So I mean, when we come to budget time, do we have to allow to put more money into that there?
We can.
Yeah, to make it look.
We can, we can take a whole bunch of money out of a lot of line items too, though. We haven't spent anything on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right.
That's going to be a long meeting.
You're used to that.
Heck of a lunch. Back in the day.
I made you guys dinner one night.
One other thing, when we had our cleanup days, somewhere in here it says cleanup days, but that money we spent that Saturday or whatever, that should come out of the annual spring cleanup, right? But there is zero money taken out of there. Did that just happen to fall into the sanitation that cost for that? Or did I miss something?
It used to always come out of the sanitation fund. I don't know where it came.
But we have a cleanup.
We haven't, yeah, we have a under sanitation, the six oh four on page seven. Um, we have a spring cleanup, but. Don't forget. Here.
I didn't see an L J P alone.
Yeah.
L J P.
Refuge fund, um, then the cleanup. I would just wondered, because we want to have that a separate line item, knowing that cleanup days, because we budgeted money for that usually, don't we?
Well.
Because sanitation is supposed to just.
We didn't use to, but we can do that way. Yes.
Because the sanitation, we aren't supposed to, we don't make any money off that. It's just even sanitation, recycling. So we should make sure that that gets in that line item there that we spent whatever twenty-five hundred or whatever dollars it was to provide the citizens dumpsters for cleanup days, just to keep track of it.
Helps us figure out how much it costs us each year too.
Yeah.
You know.
You know, yeah. So then that, uh, letter from Eric Anderson about down here at the, uh,
Oh, yeah.
Ice skating rink.
Yep.
Warming.
They worried after having come to a meeting and actually lay out what they want to do.
Yeah.
Looks like.
I can give you an idea of what they want to do. I did meet with, uh, Scott.
Oh, you did?
And, um, they basically need more room.
I realize that.
And they would, they would, the, the idea that they had, and this is totally up to us because it's a, the city's building, is the bathroom that's in there, that, the double bathroom, that's closest to the meeting area right now. They would take that out and expand that meeting area. And then the, the bathroom that's got the two stalls in it be the end, take one of the stalls out and fix some shelving or whatever up in there. So they have more storage inside of that. And then have just but one, one stall bathroom be a, a unisex bathroom.
Okay.
Down there is all.
And they would, they want to, they want to just get permission to do it, but they would pay for everything.
That's, yeah, that would be the, the, the plan. I mean, unless there's something that we really.
How about the, how about number five here where they would entertain our club and closing the portion that.
I was getting to that next.
Okay, okay.
Looking at, at the, the area there where the two picnic tables set up, there's a great big crack runs right down the middle of it.
We just looked at it.
And, uh, they were, he was asking, what do you think of the idea of enclosing half or all of this? And leave, you know, if we did half, he said they would, you know, it would be the similar to what it is right now, except it would just be half the size. Yeah. None, you know. Yes, I do see people down there and picnic tables, but.
I, that's what I told, I said, we do see, we do see it used occasionally.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It doesn't.
And there again, never used, but.
It was maybe more so when the ball games are going too, but which are going in more than. Pay for that digging, affording and enclosing that there then.
My understanding is they would take care of that. Um, but then then, you know, it's still our building.
Right. And would you think with younger families moving into town, they'd ever want the city to provide them a skating rink again?
What could happen?
So but, so I mean.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Kids want a skate park right now.
A what?
A skate park. Just telling you.
Yeah.
That's, that's what they're into now.
And that's, and that's, that's the whole point of bringing up the whole pickleball thing. When you get looking at this, they have various surfaces that are multiple use. And I was even thinking maybe a person could flood it and make a skating rink on top of something like that. You know, if it's done right.
Yeah, you'd have to protect it. Yeah.
With lit and all that, you know?
You wouldn't be able to utilize that building for a warming house anymore though. So would you have to have another little building? I mean, there's money there. That is, the citizens are good done.
Right.
And if they ask for a few things, that's how we could pay for it, right? But the money we've put away over the years.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
To provide them a skating rink and a pickle.
Yeah.
Pickle what?
Pickleball.
Pickleball. And, uh, you know, and then if there's interest in the winter time, they want to have a skating rink?
Yeah.
Flood it, have a skating rink. I mean, it used to be a big deal down over here by Sarah's house years ago.
Oh, yeah. It was down there too.
It was down there too, but.
Ashley just had an idea if, that we do end up taking over a portion of the school and we go down there with the city office, the pheasants could have their meetings up here. And then we could, then the warming house could come back.
Yeah.
But that's kind of.
Right now.
Not a bad idea.
If we flooded it this winter, as it, as it stands right now, we wouldn't have a play, we wouldn't have a warming house.
No.
They're in it.
Right.
You know, so I mean, that.
Yeah.
So, so they're just, they're just asking.
Yeah.
What they.
What?
They're at a point they need to do something, you know?
And there again, where would you put the pickleball court?
Where you wouldn't have no bathrooms there then. Well, yeah, you're right. Personally, I would just as soon have that court more to the, was it south? So you can utilize the concession stand more.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, just by.
Along the east fence of the ballpark.
Yeah.
East side.
Yeah.
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 The east side.
East of the, or south of the playground, you know?
Yep.
Oh, like over there where Ashley's showing?
Yep.
Okay.
Other than that area there, because that way there you're kind of more with the ball.
Yeah, but you could utilize the bathrooms.
Yep. Yep. Maybe a, maybe a better spot. And I realize there's no power over there probably, but you know, because if you're going to do this, you'd want to do it right.
Yeah.
Want to just chunk it together. You want to get it done.
Well, you know, if you ever had it and you could position it where you could put the skating rink over it, sewer lines already running by there, you could build another little building for a warming house. Or you could just leave the bathrooms open, which you don't want them walking in there with skates on.
Right. It'd be better to have a separate spot of that.
Absolutely.
But you could look to the future of that and design the pad to have an uplift, you know, so that you could flood it if you wanted to.
But then if you could take over the score with somebody, you have that whole playground area out front. You could also, you'd have to have parking someplace.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yep. So all right.
Well, with this right here, I mean, they just wants to know kind of where we're, what, what our thoughts are. I mean, if, if it's something that they, we, they should just move out of there and do something with the building they own up here, that garage or move to a different town or whatever they should do, you know what I mean? But they've, uh, really loved being a part of the town and loved, you know, being accepted into that building, you know what I mean? I guess I'll.
My thoughts with that big crack that's on the east side there, that's a hazard to start with. I would just let them enclose the whole thing and let them do what they want to do. That's my.
I mean, why couldn't we just put a little add-on on the outside of that even?
My God. And they would want a little bit, they'd want to do some work for parking, it said too, right?
Best, yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't get that discussion.
That's okay.
See it in the letter.
Yeah, I remember reading that.
Did we tile that area where they were parking? No, did you do that last year, two years ago?
I don't think we went up there.
I don't think we went as far as we were supposed to.
I think we went to the building.
But did we go? Did we?
And it come from the.
Down the west side building to that hole there.
Yeah, and that goes down around. It does on the west side.
The fence line.
It does.
Down to the south.
Yeah.
Okay.
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 Cause we drained it south of the, uh, volleyball court, right?
Yep.
Yeah. Cause that ain't.
Southeast corner road.
It isn't wet no more like it used to be, right?
Oh.
Oh, so when you, when you know it's not as bad as it was?
It's bad now.
Oh, good.
Get stuck now.
Oh, good.
Did you go in there yesterday?
Yesterday, but it's different.
Yeah.
All right. Well, what are your thoughts here? Want to, or take a month or want to make a decision tonight?
Well, I mean, I mean, they have been taking care of it. I don't, I, I guess I kind of on the fence there. I just, I guess I've been down, I was down there for so many years.
Minnesota Fever.
I just got.
Down there once a month?
Yeah, Thursday nights. Yeah.
Once a month.
Thursday, I think. I don't, unless it comes up to the.
They've redone the whole inside and they've, but they're out of room and there's two bathrooms that you really don't need and.
I've seen cars out there once.
Yeah, no, they're not. Once a month.
I haven't been in there for a while.
I've only been in the school once.
Oh, really?
So.
Do you have anything with it?
Yeah.
Uh, I guess personally myself, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just talking about it. I haven't really heard any other real ideas. I, they have taken care of it, but and let them enclose the, the end. But I, I kind of think that we should see if they would put a, another little roof.
Add on just a.
Just all part of their project.
Go another twelve foot and.
Yeah.
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 A couple of picnic tables, you know?
Yeah.
That kind of seems like that would.
Yeah.
They do, extend that. So there could be picnic tables down here and inside.
Right.
Under the roof. And, and then there still would be a bathroom down there that the city would be able to open and they would have a door, you know, closing up their area. So you just basically walk straight through from the door into the bathroom.
Yep.
You know?
Cause I mean, I see, you know, every once in a while there's kids down there with a mom or something.
Yeah, you know.
They sit there while their kids play on the playground. Or there's kids messing around.
It's kind of a nice little spot.
Would you want to run that past whoever you talk to and tell them it, you know, yeah?
And we're in favor of that. If we could truly understand, you know, and maybe they would be able to nail it down a little better, you know?
Yeah.
Exactly what their plans are.
I suppose they didn't want to entertain any plans if they didn't know how we felt about it.
Right.
Which makes sense.
Cause it is a city building. Yeah. But it is being utilized. Like you say, they are taking care of it. Yeah. So.
Tom. Um, Tom, this is Jim. I just want to mention that on that east end, they want to enclose there. They won't be able to just build walls in that slab. Like Robert said, they're going to put footings in there because you can see there's frost heaving right now where the posts have moved the roof line up. So they won't be able to just build walls and enclose that.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Make sure they understand that.
Yeah. I wonder if that's on a frost footing? Is that a floating, floating slab?
It's got to be slab.
What do you know? Pretty sure.
Yeah. But yeah, they'd have to redo that. So let's stay the same. Well, you contact them, you know, and we'll meet next Monday night again.
Mm-hmm.
You'd have done that quick and tell them we could have an answer by then. All right. Anything else, uh, Ashley? I guess we had a lot for you. Oh, a letter, administration letter? Wanted that under you?
You're running the show here.
I mean, I think we should, uh, just bump back and approve meeting.
Yeah, we should. Any additions or corrections of minutes from last meeting we had? And approve the bills, you want a separate one?
We talked about taking that, uh, Chris Steele one out, until we know for sure what that is, and then we'll bring that to the next meeting.
Somebody approve the minutes then, from last meeting? Second, on favor, say aye. Post motion carried. Approval of the bills, except for the one there from Chris Steele. On favor? Kennedy administration letter?
He talks when he was here about the administration committee. We had first help committee, now we have first help committee, but still having a administration committee, so people who basically are the two people that work right with me, so there's essentially a personal committee, but not, but. So then, like, you can go over those checks, you can all look those more in depth before meeting if you wanted to, or if there's any other issues. Employee wise, that can be brought to your attention, then you guys can handle that. So if you guys wanna do that, he sent the letter on that.
So, I mean, so what's this gonna entail then, though? Different nights for different meetings, or we're still having a personnel meeting every month?
Are we doing personal every month?
I figured, what, we didn't pretty much get anything done last week.
Didn't have one this, this month, regular meeting.
Well, I think what we should do maybe is each extra meeting, except for next week, have it a personnel, till we get everything, the policy looked over, everything worked out. And we might as well just say we should meet twice a month here for the next two, three months. Cause Jeff is gonna come with more information, and we just can't wait thirty days all the time. We just need to do, and it may only be a half hour meeting. I mean, it's only not quite two hours yet today. So, I mean, yeah.
But it, what if, as I read the letter, you got, he just, he's just suggesting that we go ahead and fill the administrative committee. It's been formed before, we just never filled it, right? And we should just fill it.
And he said to do, you know, rotating members if you guys don't wanna commit to. Oh, the administration.
Administrative committee meeting. Explain it to me. Just like, uh, sewer, sewer and water committee. Okay, same thing.
Two people, look at the checks.
Just two people.
Just to look at the checks and that stuff.
Right.
Checks, bills. Make sure the tax payments get done.
I haven't been around that stuff, so.
Yeah, we used to do it when Cheryl was here.
Never go back that far.
I'd be willing to do it if you need, you want another person with me, but just because I don't have, I ran out of any committees, I don't think. I think my only obligation, other than council members acting mayor, if Robert's gone.
Oh, cause we got rid of the personnel.
Yeah, I used to be on the personnel committee, and then I was on the police committee. We don't really, I mean, I, I still kinda, you know.
Parks too? Joe Parks?
No, Jim and Tom are. Cause Jim was on, so we got him on. So we can do. We do you, and then just have one other floating, if that's what.
The only thing is, we gotta be able to have something set, some system set, so that we don't forget. Floater. So, how's that gonna work? You're gonna put that in something?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna put your out names, and we'll just draw a name, and then that's who's on it.
And then it comes up every time, so that, you know?
Rotate the order, and then we'll have that same order, like, it was town this month, now it's gonna be around this month.
What do we switch it that, that often, or is it once a year? Like the committees were.
It's up to us.
I don't think, would you wanna float it every month or every quarter?
Maybe every quarter.
At least every quarter.
Because otherwise, holy cow.
Get, know what you're doing, for one thing, the first time is gonna be, take a long time, probably.
Put you in alphabetical order, as floaters.
Sure, but have an app before the regular meeting then?
I think that could happen any.
Might have to be a different time.
So, you could do the admin committee before first council meeting of the month, because the second council meeting of the month, if we're doing the personnel meeting. So you don't wanna.
Your financials. There at least, you know what I mean? I mean, if you can't do it willy nilly, so. But it doesn't necessarily have to be a meeting night at four o'clock, rather than, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, give you a whole separate time, really.
Yeah, well, and if you got off work at three o'clock and you wanted to come in some Tuesday.
Yeah.
You can just pop in, and as long as there's that other.
Yeah.
Other checks.
While you're thinking about that, that second paragraph, if you skip the first sentence and you go to the second sentence, it makes sense that the council consider using these committees to help run the city between council meetings. I am concerned that this will add even more duties for the council, and that should be considered as compensation for the mayor and the council persons. Well, isn't that what we've kinda done over the years?
It is kinda what we used to do.
But we have had such this.
Been told not to do it.
All this. I don't know what we, word to use, all this, that we couldn't do any of this anymore. And now we, we made this big circle, and we're right back where we started. Is that the way government?
That's what it looks to be.
Guys gotta quit.
If you remember, at the meetings, Kennedy said, I can say, we need to go order rock, and get a rock ordered. So this is just the admin committee saying, yes, you can, and just a second set of eyes on that person ordering the rock for the year. You know, if there's an emergency, obviously, Robert, you can make those decisions anyways. So.
So like, the sewer water committee got together and wanted to have something done by Brian? You could.
Or would we meet with some, with, like Jeff Chalmers?
Right, right.
And then you would just call, make sure there's funds in that, and then you would just do it, which is basically the.
Well, we wouldn't be making the decision to spend any money, we would just be.
Only on what had been authorized.
Yep, you can, up to a point, yeah.
Investigating or, you know, finding out what he's got. Cause if he can't make a meeting, he could tell the two people, and we could, you know, that's kinda the way that was supposed to be.
Right.
All over the past, quite a few years.
So what about getting down in, where they, he's talking about compensation? He's trying to make it sound better.
I'm assuming it would just be your special meeting rate, if you're looking at that.
Well, I read this as if you're all doing something.
What was that, Ron?
I'm reading this as if you're, it's like you'd like the streets and alleys committee, the strips, like, doing the water main and fixing the holes and sitting on there Sunday or Mon, Saturday, whatever it was, with the tree. With the tractor and the pickup and the. I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm just going by what he's talking, sitting here.
In reality, there's a lot that goes on outside of council meetings that takes up your time. And has you come back from, you know, has you come back from wherever else you are, you know? I recognize, I, I think that's what he's kinda getting at, is you do a lot more than our meeting nights.
I'll give up the criticism for no com, uh, criticism. I'll give up the compensation for no criticism. That's how I'll get paid. I'll be happy with that. Is that a doable thing? Well, anyway, we can take this under advisement. Take this under advisement for another, but if Sarah wants to be on the admin, you know, then like you say, just float one of us. You know, to do it otherwise, and, uh. This guy to the right would be a really good first one.
I think so too.
There you go, Tom, you got an idea. So.
Well, good, because I've been contacting. That's the chair.
All right, are we done, done with this?
You guys wanna do for a quarter, right?
At least we'll start that way. Maybe it would be too conundrum for that, but.
All right, we're down to community comment. Anybody?
All right, uh, good evening, my name is Mark Evans. Uh, I've been speaking with this here about a building that she has rent, or part of the building. Four hundred Main Street, that's Westminster Bank. My plans are to rent an office out of it and open up a small used car dealership. The building and the office space meets all state requirements. Uh, but I do need permission from the city. I talked to Ms. Hellickson last week, she said that there's not really anything in the code saying it can't be. But I wanted to come and talk to you guys personally and, and see if there's any questions.
Would there be cars sitting there then, in the back lot, or how would you manage that?
Uh, the plan, I'm a, uh, wherever the building is. I think this is the building. The office would be on the very north end, and then, uh, the cars would just be parked right along that north area. And the state requires me to have five designated parking spots. I don't plan to have more cars than that, because, you know, I'm just a one man operation, I don't need more than that. And I don't know if I'm really even planning on having five, but since the state requires five parking spots, I'm just gonna stick with that number. So, and they're not scrap cars, they're running usable cars for sale. My plans at this time are mostly internet sales. I don't really like the idea of people coming and randomly looking at my stuff. So, I'm not gonna have big signs everywhere and people rolling through. Really, just a place to have the cars, a place to have the license, and a place to do the paperwork. Cause I am required to do the paperwork at my.
Location.
So, I just wanted to present that and see if, uh, there's questions, or.
I thought that we had some language in the code regarding an auto dealer.
I couldn't find anything when I looked. I looked online, and I just.
That's what I'm looking now, but I. Don't understand it neither.
Used cars, or something, but maybe, could be wrong.
For a short time, they did have an auto dealer on the old co-op property too, if you guys remember that, about six or seven years ago.
Yeah, we did. It was.
Yeah.
You're right.
And that was on commercial property.
Yeah. Something in there that said it was okay.
Ten years ago, wasn't it?
Maybe, maybe.
And in case there's any concerns, I don't plan on working on cars there, cause I do have a shop in Mankato, so. I do it outside, or I can do it inside. It, it's really just a paperwork location and to fit the requirements of the state to get the license.
Yeah, like you say, I mean, if they're not, hate to say it, junk, I mean, as long as it's decent looking cars sitting there, I guess. Unless we got something on, in, in the our books.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Well, we did allow, it was Mike Fitzsimmons and son, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Back then, when Kelly was redoing cars, I believe, and then he went up there for a short time, as longer than that ago, but we allowed it back then, and I don't think we've talked about that in city codes or ordinances at all since, have we? We haven't updated anything in a long time, so.
And you'll still have parking for your renters on the backside.
And then if I get someone to rent the front, they'd still have that west side.
Right.
Where the fire department is on our parking lot. And I told Mark that, um, if this all goes through, that we work with the city and the fire department for snow removal in the winter, and he's willing to work with us to make sure cars are out of the way, so that the fire department can still push the snow into our lot and into the back alley. Because we know that's, we've been doing that for years.
That, and, you know, we might have to make better plans to get it hauled out quicker. I mean, Jake did a heck of a job keeping it down this way.
Yeah.
So.
You remember anything, Jim? I don't remember seeing anything in the code at all about it. I was just mentioning the one that I remembered.
And it's, and it's, and that works in that zone, right? That usage works for that area, the way it's zoned?
I would think so.
I believe so, being this commercial.
Is your property zoned commercial, Jim, down there?
Yeah. It's, it actually is zoned industrial.
Industrial.
Yeah, it's, uh, three, a commercial, industrial, public utilities is what his is. Um, and yours is zoned the same, commercial, industrial, public utility.
Should be right there, should be able to do it. I guess it's fine with me, you know, just keeping orderly and neat and.
Yeah.
Be absolutely no problem. Thank you for taking over a part of, uh, Marine's building.
Yeah.
There is a paper that I need to be signed by the, the city, saying that you're okay with it. I didn't bring it today, I didn't think it'd be appropriate. Uh, is it all right if I stop by tomorrow during business hours?
Sure.
Are you guys okay with me signing it?
Yeah, or if you, if it needs to be, it can be, he's usually around, or we, or I can come up, between the two of us.
I'll be going tomorrow afternoon.
Afternoon?
At noon.
I'm gonna look all night. There's nothing on here, I'll make the motion to approve.
Someone a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, post, motion carried. Thank you.
We kinda set the precedence already with the Fitzsimmons, you know, doing it, so, yeah, I think it'll be good.
Alrighty, anybody else under community comment? If not, we'll move on to new business. We got three zoning permits, GT six, seven, and eight. Thank you. Any questions on those zoning permits?
I didn't look at this one on Talladega Street. It meets everything.
Is that the renewal?
Is that handicap accessible?
So, what he's doing is where the stairs are now, he's taking stairs and building a ramp over it on Talladega.
The ramp goes out to the street?
Into his backyard.
Side yard. So, it's on the side of the house, I guess.
Yeah, he just said his dog's got displaced share or something, and can't use stairs, so.
I just say, I didn't even look what. House it is.
Um, last house on the block, a stop sign.
Oh, he's got all kinds of room then.
Yep, yep, he's, cause the yard's fenced and everything already, he said there's no utilities or anything underneath there, so.
That's his problem anyway, so. As long as he's far enough away from the, maybe he's coming right off the house, he should be okay.
Well, then that was just the foundation tile and some pipeline, just to make sure they know that they can't, you know, tie in anything.
Doesn't have any. Map of what he's doing.
So, Kleinos is just a renewal, we approved it last year, uh, but his permit is about to be up.
Okay.
So he didn't wanna have any issues, so he's just resubmitting, same thing, nothing's changed, it's just a resubmit.
So would he have to pay the full? Would he have to pay the full fee?
Too much.
Or, cause he's, he's waiting for materials, right?
Yep, so it's eleven weeks. They're eleven weeks out on trusses right now, um.
Yeah.
And there's nowhere in our fee structure that says if you renew your permit, you have to pay, so he wrote a check, uh, along with his water bill.
Okay.
If we wanna take it, if we wanna return it.
I guess I paid when I renewed, but mine was only like twenty dollars. We had like a standing.
Yeah, I don't think I did do it, I, I, I don't recall paying for it again. I just think we.
Just renewed.
Kind of extended it.
So, and, and I, I can call him and say, we're, we don't want your fee for renewal.
Yeah.
If that's what we wanna do, I just couldn't find anything in our fees.
This one had been only twenty bucks too, or so.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Ashley?
Yes.
Did, did Dennis apply for permit for his retaining walls, or was that on that same one with the garage? Or was it part of moving the house in and?
I think it, the retaining walls was part of moving the house in, the, cause the garage was separate, he did that in August of last year. But I guess, let me grab the book.
Here, he's just building a garage. Yeah.
We're starting shingles.
Nothing about moving a house.
That was the one from a year ago. Jim's question was about, uh, whether he put on the retaining wall last year at that time. Hey, Jim?
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm sure he'd have no problem getting a permit if he didn't have it included, I just wanted to make sure, one way or the other.
Jim, do you remember when he moved the house in?
That was a while ago.
I do not remember the exact date.
Four years ago?
It was two years ago, but it was in the fall. Late summer.
So, August of twenty twenty.
I was thinking of the wrong place.
Uh, moving the house, west side of alley.
Yeah, no, this is the one. Yeah.
It doesn't say a retaining wall.
Well, then you might have to redo this and put down retaining wall, right?
Retaining wall on the south side?
No, on the north side, them two little short ones.
The ones he's got on the front side there, he's been working on.
I don't know if they're done or not, but there's, they're coming up.
No, he just didn't know.
Yeah, he said if he needs to do anything else, he'll come, so it's not a big deal, but.
They wanted to go through, you know, one to two freeze thaw cycles, you know, let it let earth settle before they did any of that work, so, that's with the garage.
Well, I guess, leave this the way it is, it's just a renewal, no cost, check it out, if he doesn't have a retaining wall, one, maybe you have to apply for that. Make sure it's done right and proper.
He's putting a block wall on that.
Yeah, the front. Retaining wall.
Yeah, yeah. But it's not.
If, any other questions on these trees, let me make a motion to pass six, seven, and eight.
So move.
Someone a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Fisher, yeah, I mean, that's local case, too, it's.
Under fifty, unfinished business, Tom wanted. Under fifty unfinished business, Tom wanted to talk about pickleball and school yet.
Yeah, I just didn't know. When I, I actually found a. A website, who actually gave us a quote to do, to redo the tennis court. And so she filled out a form and maybe we'll get some information back from them. But I just wanted to kind of get a general idea of how y'all felt, whether or not, first of all, whether, I know, I know. Cost something to do with it, but it's not going to be cheap. No, it'll be a hundred grand if it's anything.
Blacked off, you mean, or?
It'll be probably cement. And they're big fans around it, you know, there's requirements, you know, for, if you're gonna use it, well, you gotta, you know, make it so it works. But then, in reading some more stuff, you can make them sort of multi-use the way it sounds. And so, all that does, of course, is just add more price because you you put more lines on them. You know, you gotta pay somebody to put all the lines on and all that, and then you gotta put, like, if you're gonna have tennis in there or something, then you gotta have. A higher fence, you know what I mean? I mean, things like that. If you want to have a skating rink in there, you have to make sure that that's burned, you know, curved up on the edge. You know? And that it was designed to take the. You know, so if there's any problem, you know, I mean, you gotta have a way to get the water off that too, you know, so I mean, it'd have to have some design, you know, to be able to do that. I was even thinking, you know, you could put basketball hoops on each end.
How big of an area are you talking?
Thinking like forty by sixty or forty by seventy, something like that. But it could get a little. I mean, I just. And then the other thing I kind of wanted to talk about was its location, you know, I mean, do you agree that? South of the playground, you know, along the outfield there, the ball field would be the. Logical place for it. I mean, at least then you're kind of using, going to be able to use as a nice concession stand. Eventually, you know, that's that's the hope, that will draw some people. And get some interest, you know, and make things like that happen. Maybe we'll get. If we do this kind of, like more of a multi-purpose and and I'm not going to say that I know what I'm talking about in saying all this. I'm just throwing ideas out. We would have to get somebody that's done this before. To construct it and do it, and come with ideas and all that, but.
I like the area. I like the idea of it, and we also have cameras down at the concession stand, so that might help. You know, keep track of it, so to speak, as far as like after hours. Problems. I think it's worth looking into, and I like the multi-use, the multi-use, the morphing. You know, having the, having basketball, having. I see there's like a four square unit in there and.
It's like hopscotch and. Yeah, it's like, I mean, yeah, shuffleboard, hopscotch, four square basketball. That's just this one. They've got, they've got plenty of options.
That's their system, you know, I mean, it doesn't say that that's the way to go.
No, but I'd like to find out.
It's kind of an idea, you know? But I think that, you know, maybe we'll get some interest, we'll have some young folks that want to do some, you know. What do they call it when you just gang up and have a basketball game and, you know what I mean? Maybe once a month they'll get together and do it or something, you know, I mean, there's just no place like that. Realizing if we do something with the school, we'd have the indoor. Then, you know, maybe we don't need basketball outside, but I'm just throwing stuff out here right now. Yeah, but outside you can play at any time. The school, you're not going to be able.
Exactly, good point.
Unless there's somebody sat sitting there. Outside, it's open all the time. That's exactly, unless there's some event going on, you know, like the ball field, you know. And when they're, when the little league or the softball teams are playing, well, not anybody can play then, but you know.
I mean, my son and his friends go somewhere else every Sunday to shoot baskets, you know? They go somewhere else. They go to Mapleton, they go to the Y.
I mean, you know, there's a possibility that we could get some more folks interested. We had something like this, but it won't be cheap because there's no power over there. You gotta light it. So you're gonna still get some stuff out of that company to, so we got something to go on? Oh, yeah, 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 oh, so that's. It is, I just wanted, there's no, was even feasible in your eyes, you know, to to do something like this.
Mapleton Heritage Park redid their courts, maybe reach out to them and see kind of. Cause they've got, like, I think they've got two sections or three sections.
Well, I mean, yeah, reach out to them and.
I've always wanted to see more, more stuff for the kids, like tennis court, kids and adults, really. You know, that would bring a lot of people to town, probably.
You'd have to take some trees out if you go on the south side of the building. And you said forty by sixty from that playground there, there now to the ball diamond fence.
So he's talking beyond the.
It would be beyond.
Beyond the playground.
Southeast corner.
Well, no, just at the end of the playground equipment, it would go south.
She's gonna zoom in there.
But it's probably.
I don't even know how big that area is.
Yeah, but that's.
There's a couple that aren't.
There's one there falling down right now.
I was just gonna say, there's one that's kind of rough.
That Google Earth, no.
A beacon.
Oh, speaking, okay. So yeah, look into though. We'll just, we'll just kind of look into it and more and but I just kind, I didn't want to go looking into things and having actually. Call contractors and get some ideas and all these kinds of things, you know, it wasn't kind of a, an okay thing to do, you know?
I'd like to get more information on it for sure. I think it's interesting.
And I reached out to the city of Crosby, because I was up there over the Fourth of July. And they've got, it's not a huge space, but they've got, you know, a twenty by forty or forty by forty. Skate ramp for razor scooters, rollerblades, BMXers, and then it would keep the kids hopefully down there and not on the streets. Just other things kids have asked for to just kind of.
I wouldn't mind seeing information on that either.
And 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 all, maybe that could be added to the end of it or. In as a separate thing off the end of it or something or up into the woods, because we own the woods, right?
I see that.
Yep, or there's a right here, there's that dirt.
BMX track, yeah, that.
A portion of it, not all of it.
Yep, so this is like about halfway through the school, so, but there was a, was, is a BMX track there. It's all overgrown now and.
Playing in there this year.
That's because probably snakes.
So, I mean, there's some ideas out there, maybe, so.
You have to do some things like this to. Intrigue people. Have something to offer, you know, get out of the house summertime. Stuff like that.
And 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 the thing is, if these are things, I don't think require much maintenance. I mean, you get trimmer on them. Well, yeah, you know, but I mean, as far as. But I mean, as far as actually maintenance of the, there's really no equipment, like, there is a net. And I'm sure they make nets now, they're pretty good, you know, and.
Well, I think that company too, we looked at, they have the nets where they have the system so it can be raised up for volleyball or lowered for tennis, and then they retract. So you can have it across the whole ball, ball court, but then retract it when you're playing ball or whatever, so it's like a three in one.
Yeah, I mean, there's, they kind of got it figured out the way it sounds, you know. Anyway, we'll do that. And then, you want to talk about school now?
You said something about the school.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, I just, I didn't know if you wanted to do it now or not. No, I just wanted to make sure. Do we know what we're doing? To have this public hearing now? You know what you're gonna say? Do you know what we're, how we're going to present this? You know, we all agree on what we're gonna say, so that we don't get down there. I don't want to get down there sitting at this table. And then you give your presentation, and then one of us goes, oh, I don't agree with that.
How do we go at this taking it over, if we took it over? And how long could we afford to to have it before we got another tenant? Could we, could we keep it for a year?
I think we would have to almost have somebody have some letter of intent. Don't you think?
So that's the only way it'd be feasible.
Yeah, I mean, the only one that I've talked, the people I've talked to, it's, it's like, it's gonna be a nightmare. Yeah, we. And we're not talking about buying it. And owning it. We're only talking about. And and being that intermediary so that we can buy it for, I'm just gonna throw a number out, five thousand dollars. Rather than four hundred thousand dollars or two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we can then sell it to a developer that with some. Cause we're, we own it. So we can do an RFP on it.
Yeah, and we can't do that.
You can't do an RFP supposedly unless you own it, okay? That's that we gotta get understood by the, by the citizens is that. You know, chances are, and maybe Jim, you'll have to jump in, but chances are, if we were to buy it. And and own it with the intent of passing it on to a developer of some sort, someone would probably show up, don't you think, Jim?
They might, especially if the initial cost is so much lower than having to spend half a million to acquire it in the first place. Yeah, one thing we need to think about too is, you know, we don't think we can afford to run it, but if. If a hundred people show up and all say they want the city to take it over, that's our decision too. So we're kind of thinking we can't afford it, but listen, if the majority of people in that room say, hey. We don't care if our taxes go up, we want you to take it over, we want new roofs, just, then that's our decision too, you know?
No, no, that's very true. We just have to make sure they understand that, yeah, taxes are gonna go up, they're gonna go up. A lot. You know, it's not going to be twenty blocks.
How does that function with with us having, you know, our investments? With our investment amount, are we able to say, okay, for a year, we can make it work, and after that, we gotta be sure to be out?
Well, I've said this before when we talked about that, that money we got invested, that's the people's money. We could take some of that people's monies to get, if there's an urgency on one roof or whatever. But the best idea is to get, like you say, get it. Get some intent there, because you could go through that money really fast.
Yes, you can.
Really fast. I heard that the school's gonna do some boiler work in it. I don't know if that's true or not. They sold the Minnesota Lake School. Does anybody know that?
Yeah, they do sell.
Quarter of a million, two hundred and fifty thousand bucks. There's been a few people walk through this building, but nothing, nothing, you know?
What about that Scott individual that came and met, came to our council meeting and talked about the possibilities he had? You think he'd entertain coming to this meeting?
He might come to the meeting. I think he'd probably want to talk to us on a more personal level. I also know he's, he's investing a lot of money in other businesses too. So, not, I'm not sure where he's at with it, actually.
I was just thinking, maybe if he came to the meeting where the public was giving their opinion on what. If they, you know, if they want to see somebody take it over and have the city be involved, so to speak. Maybe he would see what the interest is, you know? Maybe people would have some ideas and maybe help him decide what he feels is feasible, I don't know. Give him a better idea.
He did have some great ideas when he came though. He said, take one classroom, put a drop-in fitness in there. Have one classroom, have a B, a. Laundry ban or whatever, some other facilities that you can just put in one room.
Drop-in fitness, I think, would be really good.
And, but those are things that someone else needs to do. We can't do that.
No, no.
We can.
But I liked his ideas is what.
But there, like I say, though, we wouldn't. We'd only take care of it for like a year or so. And then, or less, because like. But then, once you, you run into the same problem that Vernon had. When you say you do sell a portion of it or whatever to somebody or the whole thing. Yes, sir, that could happen to you. And then Vernon spent, I don't hate, I don't even know what they spent, but it was a lot of money. I mean, they got hurt real bad. That's, that's, that's the other side of the coin. And that was the taxes that.
You could also explain. We would be the largest tenant, because we would want to have the gym and the, and that kitchen. We would want, I don't know if you'd call it a lifetime lease, but a long lease on that. Two areas, right? And maybe one room for council rooms.
You could take, you know, whereas it is now, we talked about the the front office where Pam is, you take that. Take those walls out and then the adjoining classroom, and you have your new city hall, you have your chambers. Then you have somebody there during at least business hours to kind of keep an eye on the gym and other facilities and then. But the city essentially anchors themselves there and say, we're committed to being here. Do whatever you can to fill the rest of the building. And it becomes essentially a new downtown, but you gotta.
That would be the, the idea of attracting a developer. That's what that would be for. We don't even know how much money that's all even worth, you know, you know what I mean? But at this point, but at least that would maybe attract a developer. Did you ever find out what the apartment half their demolition fee?
I did not. I haven't heard back from the school at all, though, so I don't know if maybe you have a more direct.
Was I, was I supposed to email him about that too? I just did the meeting.
I emailed him about something, but about it, but I haven't heard, so I just.
He asked if they'd be willing to give a portion of the demolition fee.
You know, half the building goes.
You know, take the front half off or. The older half.
I know Scott was saying too that we should reach out to like Mike Drummer, because he goes, he's got much bigger pockets than he does, you know? I thought we were gonna do that a long time ago.
I thought that was mentioned. Meetings ago.
Who reaches out to him then?
I was heard, you know, unless you know him, I don't know.
Do we maybe reach out to him and say, we're having a meeting next Monday, we'd like you.
This is what it's about, if you think you might be interested.
What he does, he's gonna sit down with a meeting, I don't think, not a big public meeting. He likes to sit down one on one and. But yeah, you're right, Ron, that's the downside. We could buy it for five thousand dollars and sell it to developer B, who just did us a wonderful sheet, just like the store. Looks beautiful. One year later, not one thing's moved. And there we are.
And that's how, how you gotta stress that to the property owners of this town. And, you know, we were just talking earlier about seven dollars a quarter, or seven dollars a quarter. And if we ran that up, it could be what, it could be seventy-five dollars a quarter. And that still was low, so that you'd have that cost onto there. All we've done is put cost, cost, cost.
Yeah, exactly.
And then with your pickleball thing, having it over there along that edge, guess what we need to do before that? Put that big storm sewer underneath, otherwise they get flooded all the time and heavy rain event. So there, you probably got a thirty thousand dollar expenditure.
If it's raised a bit, it might not get flooded as much.
There, you know, there's an, a foreseen there that needs to be dealt with before you even go anywhere. And myself, it still should be upsized and be able to take that water. And it wouldn't, you know, just do it. Just do it.
Just get bids and do it.
We, we had the county involved, they, they wanted engineer. We did the others, it flows downhill. It's not that hard.
If we don't involve the county, we don't have to assess or we don't have to worry about anything.
We just do it. If it costs you thirty-five thousand dollars to run a thirty-six inch, which I think you should. It should be bigger than on the north side, because you got that coming down the hill. It should be at least a thirty-six inch tile going from there south, very, all done, problem solved, and leave the existing. Just team, put a catch base in there, that comes off the school hill, could catch some of that. So, but again, and we, we have money. There's very, I'll put a little few dollars in here. We could do that this fall yet. And that's been an ongoing problem since we tiled out the fertilizer plant. So, I mean, that we could eat up and take care of.
Or just dump open into the, into a ditch.
On the south end. It bubbles out the manhole now and catches and flows over through the ball, through the playground equipment. So, I mean, that would have to be addressed before we.
I'm just, I was just thinking, does someone have to, I mean, where's the water go?
It goes to the south end, soap and ditch.
A creek that's down in Township Road. Then it goes to the Maple River. So we don't, there's nobody we have to worry about there, and to get an engineer involved and have them make sure.
It's going there.
Well, I know it's gonna get there quicker.
It's gonna get there a little quicker. So I don't think.
Now, you're right.
I don't think you're gonna change the, the quickness any, it's. I don't think you're gonna change that, the quickness any, it's.
Cause you're gonna get in trouble.
It's just gonna get there. It's not gonna be running over the top of the ground like it has, it'll be all underground. So, but anyway, getting back to the school, yeah, this is all things the guys gotta think through and try to explain to the public last week.
And if you're against it.
But I can't.
For it. I think it's gonna be a money pit for the taxpayers. Unless we're lucky as hell.
And, and to be honest with you, I'm not for it either, but I do. See the value of keeping the building up if, if it's possible, but if it's not possible. You know?
But they're.
Right up there down, they got the money.
I mean, you got six, you'd have six lots there then for sale. If it's gone.
Yeah, but if.
For houses.
How would that work? Say we got a tenant. He would purchase it all, or an owner.
Yeah.
He would purchase that from us at whatever. But us being one to be the, the, the community center kitchen people, we're just, we're just a tenant then, right?
Yep.
Just a tenant, okay?
Yep.
So, help me out, if, if the school, you know, we don't want it, nobody else wants it, the school demos it. The property is the city's. The property is the school.
Still school, yeah.
So then, we would then need to purchase the property. If we wanna do it, you know, like you've talked about putting.
Well, they, they probably sell to a developer.
Okay, yeah.
But houses on, like they did over here and wherever.
I think that's what they.
Yeah, I mean, down the road, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, uh, next year, but. If you get, once everything gets settled down again, I mean, housing is gonna be there, I mean, it's just. I'm not saying you're gonna put up four hundred thousand dollar houses.
When I kinda wanna get, you know, I'm kind of on the same line you are, I really see the value and I really wanna see something happen with it. But it's scary and I don't want us to have, you know, a money pit.
I wanna do it right, and if there's no way to do it right, then I'm totally against it.
I wanna hear before, I don't wanna. I don't wanna lead the citizens to a different opinion, I want, I wanna hear their original opinions first. You know, and then maybe we can summarize at the end. But I kinda wanna hear what people say without us. You know, knocking them down, saying, have you ever thought about this, have you ever thought about that? I just wanna hear their opinions first. You know?
You know, we, um, if you look at other towns, uh. Uh, Amboy turned that one snowmobile place into a very nice thing.
Oh, yeah.
Vernon Center, they're kinda like us, they don't really have nothing either. You know, it is a point. To, you know, hey, Good Thunder's got a nice community center. But again, we can't break the camel's back to have.
No.
I'm for it a hundred percent, but we gotta sell it.
Yep.
And we just gotta be a, the. A lifeline, lifelong tenant.
Yep.
That's all we gotta be.
That's how I look at it.
Yep.
That's exactly how I look at it. And before we. I mean, I, I would think that we could do an RFP on it if we did a letter of intent with the school, the city was going to purchase it.
Well, what happened to the dollar?
That's kinda like.
What, what happened to the dollar?
Well, it isn't really true, you gotta pay all the, all the transaction.
Okay, well, yeah, alright.
I'd say just five grand. I'd just say, I, I would say it's between twenty-five hundred and five.
Yeah.
That's what I mean, yeah.
I would, you gotta tell.
All the transfer fees.
And all of that stuff, you know? But if, if we can. If you, if, if the citizens think that it's a decent idea to approach the way we're talking. Then if we, me, I would think that we could do an RFP with an engineer. To. Uh, satisfy our needs. If we signed a letter of intent to purchase or put some earnest sum. A down, you know, or whatever. That we lose if we didn't. Didn't buy it. I mean, it's just like how people do it every day out in the real world, you know? Cause you don't know if that property is gonna work for you when you want that property. But you wanna, you wanna, you, you don't wanna put a whole bunch of investigation money.
How long do we, I mean, they got it for sale.
Yep.
So I mean, they, they could sell it tomorrow. Or do we have a?
Have first.
I don't know, I'm, I, do we?
Yeah.
Don't win.
That's how I understood it.
Don't win.
Well, until they probably have somebody who wants to buy it.
I, I'm assuming if they have someone coming in saying, hey. They're offering us three hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna take it, does the city want it or not? And then you're under the gun right there to decide yes or no.
That's correct. I would say, I would say you're right, that's probably about the deal there.
Yeah.
So this all might all be just all talk for nothing, we don't know yet, but the fact of the matter is, is that if we could. Get an RFP out and get something back on it in a month. You know, you're not looking too far down, besides, they, they're gonna probably have stuff in here stored yet for a while, they may not be in all that much of a hurry to get sold. I mean, I guess they still gonna sort of be pretty quick told.
Yeah. If the cash is there, they're gonna sell it.
Yeah, you know? So.
They'd be crazy.
And that would be the best idea.
Right.
If somebody would come in there and pay a quarter of a million dollars, it probably isn't gonna just sit and go to hell.
Oh.
You know what I mean?
You know.
And it's, that's, that's gonna be the real deal, but if somebody comes in and wants to buy it for fifty grand.
No.
We better be kinda wondering what's happening.
Yeah.
You know?
Could be a rapid end.
Does that kinda all make sense and you're gonna understand, but the way I'm looking at it anyway? Let's go from there.
We're having a pretty healthy checking account there.
Yeah.
Now, again, that would go really fast.
Yes, it would.
Yes. I mean.
Well, you could spend all of it on the roof right now.
That's right.
Yep.
Every, every bit of gone, yeah, so I mean. It's too big, you know, for, for what we actually have need for, it's way too big, that's why it'd be nice if they would demo half of it.
Mm-hmm.
The old part, and we only got part of it, that'd be way easier to stomach, you know?
You're trying to call them.
Then, and you still have some place you could have a city hall meeting and you'd have your community center and, you know?
Well, we'll have to answer the questions that the public have, or us next Monday night.
And some we might not be able to answer. You know?
We'll have to lay it out like we just discussed now.
Yep.
We have to point it out that it is a risk.
To the city.
Like Ron says, you know, yep, we could have good intent, but it, it could go for the first year and it could fall apart. So. This healthy checkbook could be gone.
And then that, whatever the school got for it, it's gonna be gone too. To, to tear it down.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So it'd be.
It's ours, it's ours.
Yeah.
It's ours then.
That's it, exactly.
It's like, you wanna spend that million, half a million dollars to tear it down or whatever it costs, you know?
Absolutely, that when it's, if you take that deal over for twenty-five, thirty-five, five thousand dollars, whatever it is, that's ours.
Yeah.
So then, the wheels had to really have to get in motion. Or you could end up with, uh. Like El.
And I'm just, you know, like. I mean, I guess it finally made it, you know, but it's still on a, a major highway too.
Yep, a little different there.
That's got a little bit of, it's a little different with it too.
Yeah, you, you, you wouldn't want daily truck traffic delivering down here.
That'd be next thing around too, yeah.
That would, could cause problems with the people that live there.
Yep.
Uh, but maybe the ones that live there, if they got a community center out of the deal, they might say, hey, it's well worth it.
Well, you know, yeah, I mean, that's maybe.
Might be that.
Yeah.
You know?
No, no, totally no, we'll see what people say.
The, the impact of, on, on taxes could be quite astronomical.
Yep.
Unless you just let it all.
Down the road, I mean, it could.
Cause you just let it all fall down, you know what I mean, then.
Well, just.
You know, take your.
Just look at your tax statement right now for that school. That's what it could cost to keep that.
Yeah.
Per person.
Yes, sir. Yeah, easy.
Easy.
Oh, easy, yeah.
There's, that's, there is a comparison, right?
I, you know, I, yeah, I just. Like I say, I'm just scared of it, I just. Seen to me, I'm full that way, you know, like the Amboy, he sat there for how many years and finally just. The school tear it, luckily there was money on the school, they had to tear it down.
Yeah.
And the city didn't inherit it, you know?
Jim, do you know Drummer?
I, I've known him for a long time, but I don't know him well. Yes.
I know somebody that might call him and ask him if he'd entertain it. I'll do that tomorrow.
Alright.
Can we?
Can we lose nothing?
Well, no.
Lose nothing.
Yeah. Because, okay, here's a question we need answered. If. Just throwing that figure out there, we got it for just an easy figure, five grand.
Yeah.
If we got somebody that wanted to come in there and develop it, what would we sell him that to for?
That's, that's, I don't, that would be the answer with, to that would be in their RFP.
But to attract them and keep them interested.
I would think that we would try to, I would think, so, I, I would think we try to sell to them just for our lease, like say, we don't charge them anything. We transfer the building to them for a twenty-year lease on the space.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Instead of, instead of coming up with a lot of money to pay us for a building and then doing improvements, we just get a lease out of it.
Yeah, if you had.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah.
I mean, there'd be no cash change.
No, we just get a lease.
I bet, I wonder if that's even legal, but maybe.
I.
Maybe.
But I mean, just say that, say that scenario isn't legal, so we, uh. Will we turn around and pass that building on for, say. Seventy-five hundred or ten thousand just to cover some more additional costs?
The way I see it, in my eyes, I might be totally wrong, is that in our RFP, we would start off by saying that we, um. Have, have acquired or, or. Or we have signed to acquire this building. We are going, we expect the cost to, the city is going to be twenty-five hundred dollars or it's five thousand dollars. Give us your ideas. How much would you pay us for the building? What are you gonna do with the building? Then we'd have to go through all their financials and history and experience and all of this to see if it would work. Then, then you would pick the highest one. The best one.
Yeah.
I mean, somebody could come in and say, we'll give you a hundred thousand dollars, but. They've got a hundred thousand dollars in the bank. Okay? You know what I mean? And the next person might come in because they looked at it and go, I can make this work, but I can only pay the city what you paid. And. You go through and then everything looks good, you know, I mean, you look, see where I'm going.
Yeah, yeah. You could have somebody, yeah, you have somebody that's got, got the money, but they have no intent.
Right.
Or if you got somebody with intent.
Has a plan. And has the plan and has done it before, and you know.
There is an individual that took over the Lakota School in Lakota, Iowa, I don't know if you could research that, Ash, and see who did that? Lakota, just down there, straight south of Elmar, right at the corner there, kinda. An individual took that one over.
And, uh.
What happens, I say, we did a lot of disasters too.
Yes, there are.
You know, that's just.
No, I mean, then that's, that's, we gotta always remind, remind ourselves.
Yep.
Well, can I put a bug in, um. Matt Little's ear. He owns the CBE Centers in Mankato. He's got warehouses, if he needs another warehouse or he needs office space or something, you know, and. You know, I kinda put the bug in here and his ear about the building, I don't know if he contacted them or not, I don't know where he stood, but it was just another. Business owner that's driven that maybe they need a facility.
Right.
So, you know, I know, um, Jim was talking to somebody, I thought at Chancasca for a while, but they wanted the gym, if that's what they were gonna do, they wanted to load it up the gym.
Oh, that's right.
So.
Well.
But I'll look into Lakota too and see.
Anyway. I just, I don't wanna go into the meeting without having this kind of a discussion so that everybody's kinda on the same page. Not now that you can't disagree at the meeting or anything like that, I'm just saying that we don't wanna have some big thing come out, but, you know? But, uh, well, I. That's not gonna work, whatever, you know, I mean.
Well, I kinda like Jim, I think I'd like Jim to call Drummer just because he's been in the building and was up on the roof and has some construction know-how if he's willing. And he's, you know, speaking on behalf of the, the council.
You just gotta tell the public that it's, it's a risk. You, you just, you've gotta explain it all like we've already talked about it here. The pros and the cons, and there might be more cons than there is pros.
It might be.
It could, it could be the other way.
But, but like Jim said, you get a hundred property owners, not citizens, property owners in town.
Right.
That.
And that's the one you gotta talk to. You know?
You know, I've got nothing against apartments, but they don't pay taxes in town. The apartment does, but not the people that live in it.
Yeah.
And, uh, same thing with all the rentals, I mean, like I said, there's nothing wrong with having rentals, I'm glad we got them. But, uh, they're not paying the bill. They are a long way around, but still.
They don't see it the same way.
They don't see it.
No, they don't, and that's, no.
It's not, yeah, yeah.
Their rent could go up twenty-five dollars a month to compensate what the owner sees on his tax statement.
Right, yeah.
They don't see it any other way.
Right, right, it's a little different.
And they're gonna wonder, why'd my rent go up?
Right. He just wants more.
Are you gonna have a sign in down there then too?
Probably should.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just get a, an idea. Sign in book at the front door.
Yep.
And they need to state their name and address.
And address, yeah.
Uh, we need to really control the meeting.
Yep.
And somehow we're gonna have to keep track of. I mean, I. Are you, do you foresee that you're gonna have people ask questions as they go along?
Probably.
So we'll have to keep track of all them somehow.
Well, it'd be if you record it, right?
Yeah, we'll we'll record it just for for us, it'll be easier for records to just. To follow up, just so we make sure we do hit every, if we can't give the person the answer right then and there, we can at least follow up with a phone call. Hey, we looked into it, this is the answer. You know?
Or or discuss the the questions we got at the council, you know, at the next council meeting and say, this is what we found out.
LGA once a month, once a year or twice a year?
Twice, I think.
LGA is the same as the taxes, it's twice a year. So we get a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in LGA. And then our May tax statement, I'd take it's from Brewer's County there for two oh two. So, you know, yeah, but again.
You already spend that.
But uh. Getting back to that tile. Should we just try to get that done this fall?
I don't see any reason why we shouldn't, we do need to bid it, but yeah.
It's the tile down where we're talking about the possible pickleball. Because it, so you you were talking that it would kinda go around the playground?
You're gonna put it underneath the ground.
Underneath the ground.
Wherever, leave the existing one, put another thirty-six inch there because you're getting what comes down the hill. You know, when it rained hard there earlier this year, that whole area was flooded. So let's just leave the existing, put a manhole on top of it so it can have a T and split and go. And, you know, we could call sellers, sellers could do that, uh, boanies could do that, we could call a few people.
And you'd have to come down across the road on both ends. With the tile.
Yeah, we'd probably have to put a bigger one across the road, yep, and this end.
On this end, yeah. Otherwise, you're kinda screwing the other things up.
We could get a couple.
Yeah, we'd have to get two, three bids, you know, and maybe local people like that wanted your end job. You know. That could be done up until middle of December.
I'll make a motion that we seek bids for that project.
I'll second it.
No one favor, say aye.
And it's described as you said, you know, you go across the road both ends.
You wanna reach out to them for that?
What am I compensated for?
Your phone call.
I can call them, I just.
You know, but we can buy the pipe. On our own. Cause then we don't have to pay tax on it, right? We'd buy our own pipe, buy our own everything.
Did, we didn't do that with DMI, right?
We were supposed to.
We didn't.
They went along with it?
No, it was a mistake.
Well, I'm just saying, a big company might not. They they made their mark up. They may not, or it may, it may, it may not. They may not get to it too quickly. It'll be a back burner project, they're not making nothing except for their labor, you know?
I'd make the other motion.
I did that on the school, everything?
I think we just listen to the people, you know, and uh. Kinda tell them what it's gonna cost.
We don't know what it's gonna cost.
We know what it gonna cost to run it for a a month. Supposedly with the heating and electricity.
And we got some, we got some numbers.
We got some numbers, but.
So I mean, that's just all, gotta be included.
But when we had our numbers and Maureen spearheaded her numbers, there was quite a differential there, wasn't there? Can we get a current, more current one?
Yeah, so we wanna do.
Can we get up to date? Year to date, like to go from the school board. Because that'll show a month or two with nobody in there.
And like you say, though, you know, they're talking, what were they saying, seventy, eighty thousand for a boiler?
And then maybe. Northwest Gas.
You'd be doing it.
Get a bill from them.
They say probably up to a hundred dollars.
That's a scary thing. That whole thing is scary, and like I say, then.
We should ask the insurance guy what. A building like that would cost you insured.
You know, we did ask all my question once before.
I thought we did too.
I think we did, but I'll I'll follow up with him anyways.
That is. Ron?
No, you guys have a letter that you guys wanted to talk about?
Yes, it's our apology letter. That everybody signed, except Jim, Jim didn't sign it, cause he's up there. He'd have to reach through the screen. So in any case, why, I, we just wanted to present this to you.
And. Tom, I really, I really like, I'm not gonna read the whole thing unless Ashley wanted it to be, but.
You can read it, I don't mind.
I think it's a good letter, and I think it comes, you know, it's it's sincere. You know, we as members of the Good Thunder City Council express to you our sincere apology. For the shaming that you endured by the use of a photo taking during a council assigned task. We take responsibility for the actions of ourselves and the other citizens of our city and regard them as unacceptable and inappropriate. And have un- undertaken personal corrections, so this type of behavior doesn't happen again to you or other city employees. This is the part I think is really important, we understand the importance of your position and moving forward. Are committed to working on ways to strengthen your abilities and effectiveness at your job. Our sincere desire is to work together as a council with you to move the city forward. To a toward a bright and sustainable future. Thank you for all your efforts in the past and in advance for your future ideas and work. And I I signed that meaning it, you know, I read it and I I think it's a good. Represents how I feel, so. Good job, thank you.
Um, with that, I I do accept your letter. Tom, the email I sent you about the other things that are now continuing to go on, how are we going to move forward and address that?
We'll have to move forward at a personal meeting. I had to make the motion to adjourn.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, everybody.
You too, Jim, thanks for logging in.
Yeah, no problem.